Sasha, are we ready to go?
Happy New Years, we're ready to go.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, or good evening, rather, Peralta Community College District. We're calling this meeting to order 6:13 PM. On Tuesday, January 10th, let's go ahead and take, excuse me, let's take roll call through point two. Sasha.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yeah.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
You have four.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Quinlan, would you do us the honors?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of what is there. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. 3.4, the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. Over the course of the last two years, we, the PCCD Board of Trustees, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we've conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that conifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. Full statement of cooperation, as usual, is attached to this agenda item. And in summary, we have committed to build trust and to seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and to model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Next, 3.5, public communication. Sasha?
Yes, ma'am, I have Jennifer Shunowski.
Jennifer, President Shunowski is here in the boardroom with us.
That was so fast, I wasn't even ready yet. I first want to say good evening. It's so nice to see so many people that I've never met in person, in person. So, welcome, Dr. Benjamin, welcome, Dr. McKinley. It's nice to give you both a hug and, and say happy new year. I'm gonna be brief tonight. I wanna start by thanking the benefits team for the transition to healthcare. It was a little rocky. We felt some, some ripples and some waves. But I do recognize that it's a very small team here at the district. And I especially want to acknowledge the echo coming. Okay, thanks. Am I still echoing?
No.
Okay. I especially wanna acknowledge Harazon for all of the work that he put in. All of December, when I'd come to the office, he would have stacks of paper. And he's really been responsive to members that have had issues, and so I'm super grateful to all the work that he's done. I want to congratulate our very own Chief of Staff slash attorney, General Counsel, thank you, and Royal Roberts on his new position as Assistant DA for the city of Oakland, no, Alameda County. I'm sure that Royal will do a great job and we'll really miss you. I, I remember meeting you first in the benefits office. And I think our kids played together at a board meeting when they were really young, so congratulations. I hope we have lots of opportunities to work together in the future. And I would swear, but I might get, I might get written up, so don't F it up, Royal. All right. I also wanna congratulate our very own Kevin Jenkins. I did make a couple of comments last time, but again, you know, Kevin, you've been a real breath of fresh air on the board with your youth, your energy, your commitment to Oakland and your commitment to Peralta. And so I'm really grateful that you've always picked up the phone. You've always engaged with us on issues that were really impactful for us. And I really can't wait to see all you do for the city of Oakland in your new role as council member. So, congratulations and thank you for everything. And that's it. I'm really looking forward to a productive year. I hope that we can get our buildings fixed, we can get some heat in some of our classrooms and other buildings. I hope that we have the chemicals we need to run chemistry labs. I hope that we have the personnel we need to staff all of our classes. And I hope that we focus first and foremost on the quality education for our students that we serve every single day. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, President Shunowski. Sasha, do we have anyone else who signed up for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to 3.6, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yeah.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yeah.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. 3.7, recognition of former trustee Kevin Jenkins. So, we have a proclamation that I am very happy to read out. Number one, this is what it looks like, so everybody can see it. Whereas Kevin Jenkins has served as the elected representative for Area 2, serving the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees since December of 2020. Whereas Kevin is a proud alumnus of the Peralta Community College District and a stalwart supporter of the district and its students. And whereas Kevin is a native Oklender, having earned a bachelor's degree in urban studies and planning from San Francisco State University and a master's of public administration from California State University East Bay. And whereas trustee Jenkins has a long history of community activism, having worked in local government for many years to influence systems and to improve the lives of people from disenfranchised communities and to assist, to assist local community-based organizations in addressing societal inequities. And whereas his community involvement includes serving in leadership roles on the Alameda County Public Health Commission, the Peralta Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, the California Association of Black School Educators as president and is currently the Director of Housing Justice Initiatives at United Way Bay Area. There's only one more. Whereas his recent election to the Oakland City Council, which begins January 10th, 2023, for a four-year term, has advanced his political career to a broader audience, which will help Oakland move forward on issues addressing gun violence, combating illegal dumping, better affordable housing access, and reducing homelessness. Now be it proclaimed that the governing board of the Peralta Community College District expresses its appreciation and gratitude to trustee Kevin Jenkins for his service to the board and his lasting contributions to the Peralta Community College District and its mission. Thank you. Oh, you gotta take a photo, Kevin.
Yes.
Me, okay.
Do you want to get words?
Yes, go ahead.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys gotta bear with me, this is my first time speaking as a member of the public. But I appreciate you guys giving me this proclamation. I have a very empty office right now, and so this is gonna go in there to decorate it. I am so thankful for the opportunity to serve Peralta. It's been a wonderful learning experience. I'm thankful for all my colleagues that I've had the opportunity to serve with. I know we each bring things to this board. We don't always get along, but I think we have done a good job of moving this district forward. I started taking classes here about 20 years ago. I know I look a lot younger than what I am. But I started taking classes here 20 years ago, and never in a million years did I think that I would be here as a trustee. I was a struggling student that earned an AA worth of withdrawals, and I had to fight and claw my way to transfer to San Francisco State. And so I'm so eternally grateful for all that Peralta has offered me and that all that Peralta puts in the community. But with that being said, we have a lot of work to do to make sure that Peralta is around for future generations. We have to ensure that students are continuing to get quality education. As my good friend Dr. Shunowski said, we gotta make sure that our classrooms are heated, we gotta make sure that our buildings are up to date. And so I wanna take some time to highlight president, not president, I gave him a promotion, Coach John Bean. His program is excellent and the students have success there. And how can we model that and ensure that our students at Peralta have that type of success? I wanna take some time to highlight Chief Royal Roberts. So incredibly proud of him for becoming the Chief Deputy Assistant for the District Attorney. And so I know if I ever get in trouble, no felonies, just misdemeanors, if I ever get in trouble, I know who I can depend on. And I didn't say what type of trouble, good trouble, like John Lewis. And not to take up too much time, but for the new trustees, as long as you're student-centered and involve our stakeholders and value our chancellor and our administration, I think this district will move forward. But remember to be student-centered first. And to my friend, my sister, and my twin, and the president of this board, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Peralta.
You will be missed, Kevin.
We know where to find you, city council member.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the rest of our agenda. 3.8, board review of Code of Ethics. That is me. I'm in the packets. It's BP 2715, Code of Ethics is standard of practice. Shall I read it all? Would everyone, I'm happy to read it out loud. Any preference, colleagues? Okay. Does anyone have any questions about it?
I've been told to keep my hands off the microphone, so I, and not touch it, but I know that Dr. Benjamin and I had talked about and worked with the, the president to get the agenda together. And I don't know if we wanna highlight anything under the, the Code of Ethics or just to acknowledge that everyone has read that and reaffirm it. I think that was the intent, really. Not to just go through and read all of it, but just to, to affirm that the board members, it's a, it's something that we said when we developed our, our goals that we would do on an annual basis, so this fulfills that requirement.
Great. Trust, I'm sorry, Vice President Quinlan, go ahead.
Yes. There was one part, I, I'm not sure about the process to amend this, but there was one part where it talked about serving in the interest of our students. And I agree with that part, but I would also like to add another part that we should be serving in the interest of our community. We are a community college, and that means that we have a role just outside of our students with economic development, with providing many things that other colleges, other educational facilities do not apply. And that's serving the needs of our community in terms of many other things. And I think it's important to broaden that scope, that we are a community college and serve our community and our students are part of that community, most significant part that we are here for, but also that we, we are also responsible for the development of our community.
Point well taken, and we will start that process. There is a process for us to do that, but I, I did take notes, and we will follow up with the board at a later date.
Go ahead, trustee Napoleon Bellarise.
And, and I'm wondering for the new trustees, chancellor and/or Dr. Benjamin, if it would be helpful to actually kind of go through each one, not reading it, but go through each one, because I think in black and white and really understanding what this means, especially for our two new trustees, very important.
Agreed.
Do you have it?
We could bring it up on the screen. Could we bring it up on the screen, Sasha?
I, I have it. I can just run through it. I think in you, when you did your statement of cooperate, oh, I'm sorry. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Dr. Benjamin.
Benjamin, I'm the kinda facilitator, I guess, or consultant, or, I don't know, I never got a title from you guys, but I've been working with the board for, this is my third year, I think. We started right at the time of the pandemic. I was all scheduled to come, had a ticket and all that, and then, so this is my first time. So it's like a reunion for me to see everybody. It's just wonderful to be here and to continue working with you. So, we were, for the new trustees, we've been through a lot together, the board and I, and Dr. Jackson and folks who work here. And so it was all to make the board stronger. And one of the activities in which they participated was to create a statement of cooperation. And in that statement of cooperation, they indicated that they would review this Code of Ethics. And lots of boards do this at the beginning of a year when they change offices. And so I'll just run through for the good of the order, I suppose. It says acting as a whole, that's number one, that you are seven or will be soon, again. And the decisions you make, you make as a whole, and whether you agree with what was made, whether your vote was in the minority or not, you go with whatever the decision was. Managing conflicts of interest, you do that Form 700, I think, which is an annual reminder of that. You do that Form seven hundred, I think, which is an annual reminder of that. Handling special interest groups. It's not what you do. It's not what you're here for. You're here to be objective, to do what is in the best interest of students and nobody else. Maintaining appropriate conduct at board meetings. Treating each other respectfully, being prepared, participating, all these kinds of things that indicate that you're paying attention and you're devoted to what you've signed up to, what you've been elected to do. Maintaining confidentiality of closed sessions. What happens in closed sessions is nobody's business but yours. It's not anybody else's. And as much as people might want to get information from you, you have an obligation not to tell them. You have to keep things confidential. Maintaining, sorry, exercising authority. As trustees, you act as a whole. That goes back to that in a bit. You shouldn't misuse your authority. You don't have an authority as an individual, but as an entire, entire group. Handling of administrative matters. You focus your attention. And that one can be hard. I've been on a board and a college board, and it's difficult not to get into the details. But you're supposed to keep yourselves at the policy level. And I can't see what's at the bottom of the page. Just won't move. Was that the last one?
I know.
Okay.
Can you move your microphone to the other side of the computer? Sorry. Oh.
Do you have it on?
Was that not close enough?
I was looking at the front microphone, sorry.
Oh, okay. So that concludes my little review.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin. Do we have any other questions or comments on this before we move on to our next agenda item? All right, seeing none. Dr. Benjamin, three point nine, our opening activity.
Yes, your opening activity. This is a retreat, although it kind of feels like a meeting. And this is the opportunity for the board to delve more deeply into issues or topics that on which they want to focus in, of course, an open session. And we typically have some activity to kind of bring us together at the beginning of the meeting. And especially now because we have new members, we wanted to have an activity. So what I'd like for you to do is just share in no particular order your motivations for being a board member. Why did you, what? No, I'm sorry. Why in the world did you seek this position? But takes a lot of time. You had to run. You had to do all that. What motivates you to be a trustee in Peralta? And what skills and expertise do you bring to this position? So anybody can start.
Don't all go at once. Dr. Johannes, you want to start us off?
No problem. Well, I did just campaign, so I guess it's fresh. My sort of story of sources is more so fresh. So I'm not from Oakland. I'm originally from Washington DC. And it's not a state, so we don't have any state schools, meaning we don't have any in-state tuition, right? So we only have private schools that are thousands upon thousands of dollars. We do have one university of District of Columbia, which is our one community college. And that's sort of where I started. But I tell people I didn't finish there because actually I didn't, I didn't care for it at the time. Sorry, UDC. And so that's really unfortunate, you know? I think people should be able to continue on if you have this economically affordable, sort of affordable opportunity to be able to advance. Please, let's take advantage of this, but it still has to be up to par. And what I ended up doing was having to, not having to, but at that point in my time in life, it felt like I had to join the army less than a year after nine eleven. And to be a daughter of immigrants and then joining other countries in their mind, army and during high wartime, that is almost unheard of. That was pretty scary for myself and my family. Made it out there after six years. I actually didn't even get my first degree until I was thirty years old. And that opened a lot of doors. I ended up in education after that. I ended up teaching abroad for a few years, English. And then I came back and got my masters. Didn't get that until about thirty-five, but then got a second one. And I said, you know what? This is actually working for me. And I'm actually teaching at a university right now. I'm assistant dean at the same university, Golden Gate University in the city. And I think my story is applicable. I understand being a student. I understand being an instructor. I understand being an administrator. I understand just sort of all levels of higher education. And I just wish that I could have continued with the not say easier option, but to continue on with community college instead of having to do all those steps. I'm glad I made all those steps, but that shouldn't be something that somebody has to do in order to make it in this, in this country. So that's my story.
Thank you.
Just to go to one, you want to go next?
So a number of reasons. First of all, I did a lot of complaining about this district when I was teaching and part of this district. And part of my belief is if you have the energy to complain, you should have the energy to work on those problems yourself when you have a chance. I did that at Laney, and once I retired, I knew I wanted to do it at the district level also. The second thing is the community college system has an incredible impact on my life. Nineteen eighty-one, I was working at Mack Truck in Hayward's, and the plant announced that it was closing down. I went over to Chabot College to enroll in classes, talk to a counselor. Thirty minutes later, I was talking to the vice president of instruction. And an hour after that, Chabot had set up special classes for all the people being laid off at Mack Trucks, free classes in electronics, machining and welding, which were three key manufacturing technologies that our people had some experience in, so easy transition. I ended up going to apprenticeship at Mare Island Naval Shipyard. Again, was involved with Solano Community College that handled our academic portion of our training. So to me, I owe a big debt to the community colleges because all the income security I have comes from that. I learned a lot while I was at Laney, not just teaching, but I learned about the power of those, of our programs, our community college to transform people's lives, to transform their families, to transform their communities. And anything I can do to serve and promote that transformation to me is just, it's another debt that I owed to the community colleges and something that I hope to pay. The other part of it is I've lived in Oakland a long time, almost forty-five years now, forty years. And there's parts of our community that I love, and there's parts of the community that I'm really troubled by. The lack of ability to move out of certain, you know, move out of poverty, move out of without healthcare, move out of, you know, the fact that we're losing a good part of our community, the Oakland that I moved to is gone now because people can't afford to live here anymore. But one way to do that is housing policy. The other day, way to do that is promote income that people can afford to live in Oakland. And so those are the things I want to work on. I want to change Oakland, you know, where there's more opportunity available. And I think our community college system is the best way to do that.
Just you with, go ahead.
I feel very strongly in the inherent mission of the community college system in general and the mission of the Peralta Colleges in particular. And that's my motivation. It is an honor and privilege to be a part of a process with some very talented and committed and energetic colleagues. I feel very strongly in the inherent responsibility of each of us to contribute to the community. Allah, our vice president here, that is our role as trustees. In fact, I think it is a major role we have vis-à-vis some of the other things we get into. I've become aware, as we, a lot of us have, the tremendous success stories of community college graduates over the years. And it'd be pretty hard to not be stimulated and motivated when you hear the stories that coming forth. Expertise and skill. I don't consider that I'm an expert in any particular skill set. I do have a significant amount background in financial management, both in terms of education and work assignments. But I learn something new in virtually every day and through a broad spectrum of involvement. I strongly consider education to be a process of learning how to learn because you never stop having to learn. I worked three summers while attending my undergraduate pursuit as a head accountant for the Yellowstone Park Service Stations, a public corporation based in California. I got the job for a number of reasons, but it was a May to September job, so I could fit that into my college. I received my room and board in college by being a house manager and treasurer. I served an active duty in the US Navy for twenty-four years as a supply corps officer. We were financial managers along with logistics. I served on the staff of the Chief of Operations in the Pentagon in the role of developing policy for supply, supported the operating forces. We're talking some very, very complicated financial analysis and recommendations and whatever. In today's dollars, we're talking billions of dollars. I served for twenty years as a financial professional after leaving active duty in the Navy, national and international capital markets type. So I would say if I do have a skill set that I can bring that is a little ahead of the power curve, it's in the financial management.
Thank you.
I think that there are two main reasons as to why I decided to do this. I think the first is that the practical reality is community colleges are the most important educational institution for our communities. There's no other way to say that. We spend so much time as a society ensuring that students go to four years and graduate school, and yes, that is really important. But there are also many other populations within our communities where that is too much time, that is too expensive, they're not cut out for that. And I think that community colleges fit all of those needs and then more if we do it right. So I think in terms of a practical purpose, community colleges are, and we've heard everybody say this, but it's so true, the engine of social transformation, and especially in a place like ours where there's so many, as Louis said, populations of individuals that so need our institutions. This was in my backyard, and so it seemed like a no-brainer in terms of investing my time into it. The second part of that is I remember prior to coming on, I always like to, you probably all know this about me now, I like to research things to make sure I know what I'm getting into before I get into it. And so I watched about three years of board meetings. And I think what my catalyst was, was when I saw board members yelling at people in the boardroom, not board members, but also board members, but people in the boardroom. And that's when I said, that's never okay, just isn't okay. In terms of my experience, I think what I bring to the table is my trifecta. I've been a faculty member for almost thirty years. Dear goodness, almost thirty years. Community colleges, universities, just kind of all over the place, and I love it. I was very involved in the state faculty academic senate, so I know AB seventeen twenty-five like the back of my head in terms of application and knowledge. And then I also am a commissioner, and that really has honed and helped and shaped my macro understanding and my micro understanding. So I thought, what better place than a board member to use that stuff?
It's a good warm-up question, Dr. Benjamin. I think Bill and I are entering our nineteenth year on this board. And so, you know, thinking back that far, like, why do you run? I've been a community college instructor for about thirty-four years, something like that. I think I've taught close to twenty thousand students, something along those lines. And there's a thing about the community colleges in California that's really incredible and unique as a democratic institution. The idea that our educational master plan envisions a society in which any adult who could benefit from higher education should get that at no cost. That's kind of extraordinary. I teach politics and I've been a community organizer for, since I was in my teens. And one of the lessons that I learned really early on from, from one of my mentors, the late US sender Paul Wellstone, is he used to say that we all do better when we all do better. And I can't think of a better embodiment of that ethos than the California community colleges, that if you invested in regular people, that they would pay that back a thousand times while improving their lives. And I can't think of a better way of empowering people than building that kind of a democracy of the hundred percent, the top one hundred percent that we get. I can't think of a better way of doing that than the community college system. And so when I looked at the Peralta Colleges as an institution that was a gem in the East Bay, but never has been able to live up to its promise, I thought, well, I could probably help. I didn't know it'd be so damn hard, though. Like, like, quite seriously, I knew at the time that I was running, all right, that probably the main problem at Peralta is Peralta is the the sort of the internal lack of relational skills. And I think that's where we still are. I can't say I've got great relational skills, you know? I mean, I do as well as I can figure out, but I don't know, I, you know, in the time that I've got left on this board, maybe it'll be two years, maybe I'll run again. I don't, I don't know. I think a lot of it depends on how well this board does. I'm interested in kind of building on this legacy of where we are right now with increased relational skills. I think that as a board, if we can figure out how to tap into this kind of skill set, you know, we've got four educators on this board right now. Oh, my God, what a dream. If we can tap into that kind of skill set, maybe we can help model that. And I don't mean to be so arrogant to think that we're going to figure that out for this body. But I think if we can help model that, I think we'll be doing a lot better. That's where I want to go this year. So I don't know if I answered the question.
You did indeed.
Thank you. Deanna?
Sure. So as you know, actually trustee Jenkins or former trustee Jenkins and I were elected at the same time. And so my inspiration for running, so I am a third generation, I'm a third generation, a lot of things, but in particular community college graduate. So my grandmother went through the community college system, my mom did, my two sisters. And my real inspiration for running, for taking the seat at the time was my brother, who at the time was going through Laney College, and so is now having a really great career in the US Air Force because of his time, partially because of his time at Peralta. But he would complain a lot to me. He's like, oh, Deanna, you're in politics. I'm going to tell you this because I have no one else to tell about some of the things that were, you know, that are working and what we're still working on here in the district. And so when my predecessor decided not to run again, for me, it was a no-brainer because of how transformative, to use your word, Louis, how transformative my community college experience was for me. If I didn't have the bog feet weaver, which is what it was called at the time, I would have not been able, I wouldn't be here, to put it quite frankly. I never would have gotten my degree from UC Berkeley. I never would have gone to Mills, become a community organizer, a union organizer now, and working in politics as I have. That's some of the skill sets that I bring is that lived experience. And I think a lot of us at this dais bring that lived experience to our positions as it is. So that's been my inspiration. That's what I think I bring to the table in a nutshell. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
This was really great, just by the way. So I'm really nice to hear everybody's motivation for this.
To hear you speak about why you do this work, the diversity and your skills and background, and you bring all of that to the table. And sometimes that can cause tension, but to me, tension is always for good because wonderful things develop from diversity and especially diversity of opinions. And it's knowing how to work together, to have those really, really, really hard conversations and come up with good solutions, come up with compromise and good solutions for our students. So thank you so much for, for sharing. And Sasha, if you could get back to my slideshow and go to the second slide. And Sasha, if you could get back to my slideshow and go to the second slide. She hears me. Alright, next slide please. And this is our mid-year retreat. We always have ground rules, not that you need them, but we just, just, just in case. Just three quick things here. Listen as an ally, listen and engage. See this whole little session we're going to have here as an opportunity to learn and plan effectively for this district. Secondly, recognize and respect. That people are different. I just mentioned the word diversity. People are in different places and have a right to their opinion and so much is happening in the world right now where people differ. And have different opinions and different perspectives and it's okay. They don't have to think the way that you think and it's true in this group as well. So look for opportunities in the conversations we have tonight, and I'm going to try to get through this pretty fast, but I got a lot here. Where you can join each other. Rather than judge each other and, and be curious and, and go deeper to understand what people mean. And then finally, be fully present. Please don't multitask. I'll give you a little break, maybe two or three minutes so you can check your iPhone or whatever. But would like to have your attention totally on what we're doing. Next slide please. And so these are the outcomes that I anticipate. That at the end of this, hopefully. There's a sense of community, a little stronger than what it is right now among and between you as board members. That the new trustees have more knowledge about current issues and maybe some of the things that have gone on in the past. That we have a sense of how much progress you've made on these goals and that the new trustees are familiar with what they are because we're halfway through on these. And then we'll have the initial actions to be taken and moving forward on. Hiring a new chancellor for you guys. Other outcomes you want? Go back a second Sasha. From this, those are my top of head outcomes based on what we have to do tonight. Alright, next slide please. So the progress toward twenty-two, twenty-three board goals. So you have. Board goals, I'm gonna walk through, we'll kind of discuss. I usually have you do a little. Sir, I do a survey on these. We didn't get to do the survey this time, but we're going to walk through. I'll try to make it a pretty fast walkthrough and then we'll talk about. The hiring process. Next slide please. We've done the opening activity. Next slide please. So the very first goal, and we have this goal every year, every board. And this education related, it has to have a board that has to do with educational quality and student success. And what we mean here is that this board is committed to fulfilling the mission of the district and will ensure. That students have a quality learning experience that maximizes their opportunities for success. And I think all of you made some connection in your remarks about students and I have the related district goals there. And you created nine actions you were going to take on this goal. So let's see how you did. And what I want us to do, want you to do is to determine whether or not. You've made any progress on that particular activity or objective. Whether we need to keep it or move it and Cindy will be taking notes here because I can't take notes on it. I typically, typically take them on the screen. But. We're still in the Zoom world, Connor. We have made the transition. Alright, next slide please. So you'll see four of the goals. This first one, and when we made these. Dr. Abellarice, you were the chair, so you're very familiar with these. In fall and spring, you would receive disaggregated reports. On all these things that are listed, student progress, including how students are supported, student readiness to learn. And Ricky, I mean. Dr. Yan, you helped to write this one. I'm remembering as I read this part about. Including food, housing and transportation, security, work and family demands and their own investment in their studies. And regularly engage in meaningful discussions about students and their success. In the first six months of this plan, have you done any of this? Would you say? I know you've looked at reports. Have you had any discussions around? Students and their success, housing and things like that. You want to speak to it, Cindy?
Yeah, I think we've had the enrollment academy.
Yes.
We spent a lot of time, that's actually what we focused on during the enrollment academy and I think it's come up several times in subsequent conversations too as well. So, yes, we could always do more, we could always do better, but we have.
And this is one you'll probably always have. This is at the, at the core of your work. Review targets for increasing student performance over time. Any progress there? You remember? I usually kind of help you, but we didn't get a chance to do it this time. But I know you got those reports and Dr. Jackson, jump in anytime you feel like it. And then on C, expect that. And I want to point out to the new trustees, I want you to see. The verbs that we use, these action words, receive, review, expect, receive. Because you are not out there doing the work. You are making sure it's getting done. You say what you think needs to be done as you do in these statements. But you are checking here. That's your, you're at the higher thirty thousand foot level. You don't do the work. You don't go into the, all these different meetings. There's just too much going on. There's no way you could do it. And so that, that's why we start with, with verbs like this. Climate surveys are administered regularly. So what about that? Did we get any climate surveys done? We have just kind of carried this one over. I don't think we've done, you did? One.
And the second one was just launched in December.
Okay, so this, this year already. So excellent on that one. Receive and review results of marketing strategies that align with board key action items. Now, this was something you really wanted at the time that we talked about it around marketing. Did you make any progress there?
We discussed that today as part of the operational report and we'll also discuss it again at the enrollment. Academy.
Okay, good.
Yes, the, the board has regularly got updates from marketing of. We launched our webpage this year. We have some counters on that, so they've been getting data such as that. From me as well as from Mark.
Alright, let's go to the next five, please. Sasha, next page. Participate in study session on enrollment academy. You did that. Yay, okay. So I'm certain you did this next one that you monitored the development of the follow-up report. Do we, we don't even need to discuss that one, do we? Monitor district compliance with city, county, state and federal coronavirus regulations. I know that was really a serious. We've been on that one for a while. And then H, receive reports on career awareness efforts. Career awareness. I know. I can't remember which board member had that concern about students. Being aware of what kinds of jobs they could get, what things they should major in. Yeah, so that may be one we need to put a little emphasis on that you didn't get to yet. The year's not over. Year's not over. And then I receive annual reports and updates establishing and monitoring the strength and effectiveness of the district's student and civic engagement. That's you, Dr. Yan. And student government processes and outcomes because there's a, that assembly on nine, six, three. And we were trying to make sure. That you were supporting that and eighty seventeen twenty-five, including implementation of effective. Student governance and student leadership recruitment. And we got into a conversation too around. Student participation on the board because you, you have, I think, two seats for students. And then in two years, this is my third year, I don't think I've seen a student trustee. In one of the retreats. So how did, and we know how difficult that is. We've had the conversations before. Any comments on I? Yes, Dr. Yan.
Well, so just looking at the whole group, you can see that. We've done really well in some areas and in other areas we. Still a work in progress. What I, what I'd love to hear is. When we look at. Some of the reports that we're expecting to receive at some point in the spring. Where are we? And, and maybe not even necessarily go into the micro detail here, but. For example, if we just launched a climate survey. I think it'd be fabulous for the board to see the survey instrument. Like, oh, well, what are we expecting to see here so that we can study it and then anticipate that? And then I think this is a really good prompt. In particular, for me, looking at item A, where we look at student readiness to learn.
Right.
I think we don't understand that very well. And I'm not certain we know how to understand it, but I think this is part of the climate survey work that we're, we're trying to figure out. And then coming back to I. This isn't just unique to this district, but I do think this is a major area of weakness and. Rather than just point it out as a weakness, I think it's a major opportunity for us. Because there's so much lived wisdom. In the student leadership and because we don't have a very. Effective pipeline structure of developing student leaders and then really moving them through a process and training them and supporting them. I think we've got a lot of potential here.
So before we move on. Can you just speak a bit about the climate survey? Dr. Jackson or Stephanie? The one, because you've already done one, right? And did the board see the results of that one? Do you remember that you saw it, board members? Okay.
I believe that was in November. I'm trying to remember the date that we did that. It was at one of the regular board meetings. It was done by Dr. Herrera, who is our institutional researcher. Provided that there was some questions which hopefully will be addressed the next time regarding, so what does this mean? Because he presented data.
It was just the results.
The results of the data, but I think what the board wanted, at least from my notes, was a deeper. Analysis of, okay, I'm looking at the numbers, but what does that mean? And that was a part that we have to address is because that was just. A survey that was taken online. The other part that we've been doing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Joker, is. Focus groups and that's been happening not only at the district level. Through the institutional researchers, but the presidents may want to address this because I know specifically they've also been doing this. And those are embedded in the composite report that I gave you, which I know is very long. But. As we go through these, I, I'd like to encourage the, the. Presidents, if there are things that are pertinent to the discussion that you feel you need to bring forward. Please do, just do not belabor it and go down into the weeds so that we're here till eleven o'clock at night.
I, I just want to preempt right here. Rather than do that. It sounds as though from what Dr. Yan said that.
Just left.
That, so part two is coming up. And it sounds as though they might want a little more engagement in it to see the instrument and maybe they could. Be given that. And then, because part, in part two, I think you're going to get more into what they're wanting. The year is not over.
And if I may, Chancellor, I think the other, when we did the first one, we. It was really done in a vacuum and it was mostly done online.
Yes.
Because we were all online and that was one of the criticisms. And so one of the reasons it's been taking so long is because there's been a real effort to have this done at the colleges. So not only online students, but our, our on the ground students. Further, we also, when we developed, further developed the instrument. We included faculty and classified professionals in reviewing it, which we had not done before. So there was.
It was of students and not of employees?
It was of students, but faculty and classified professionals also reviewed it with, with our researchers so that. That we had more participation as far as perspectives.
Okay.
Of the instrument itself. And one of the things we made sure was the issue on, the question on. How do we know how, the amount of time students are investing in their learning, which is something that trustee Gonzalez, you and really have, has brought up over the last year. That was intentionally put into the climate survey as well. So we should have some data. Analyzed for, in the. Next month or so.
Okay, more to come. Yes.
You, you do bring up a good point though, and I think in the conversations or the previous retreat, I think we talked about a climate survey. Yes, for students, but I think we also talked about a climate survey for all.
We did. We, we, we took that, but remember we.
Yeah.
Decided to take it out. It hadn't been done. It had just been rolling over and rolling over.
Okay.
And so then we focused here on students primarily, I think.
Did we, did it emerge again somewhere else or did we just?
I don't think, I don't think so. It's not in here. I've been through all these.
And, and if I may add one more item. Regarding employees, one of the areas of the climate survey wasn't really about the perspectives of work, but it was on what. Training opportunities and professional development areas we would need as part of the chancellor's initiative on. The professional development and learning center and that has gone out and that is informing the training.
Yeah, and we're going to get to that one in a minute and down further. Yes. Absolutely. Would you send a copy to the?
We can send you the link. It's, it's online as part of the board docs and. Both of you are getting access to board docs, but I'll send you the link on that. And I think it was November, but I'll, I'll check. Maybe I'll find it before the end of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's move then on to board goal two, which has to do with diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice. The statement, the board is aware of the importance of a safe and welcoming teaching, learning and working environment for students and employees. And will promote equal access to educational achievement through collaborations that value. Diversity, equity and inclusion. And you had only three key actions. Let's take a look at those. So first, require and monitor development of the district's approach to DEISJ. Reactions. Did you do that yet this year? I just want to remind us that there's still time.
Yeah, you know, so, so it's interesting because I'm looking over the composite, I'm looking all of the, at all the evidence put forth and. And very clearly, yes, because at our colleges and the updates and all that is brought to the, the board. Clearly, yes, in terms of data and, and actual implemented actions. Were we looking for more though as a board? And that's just a question to put out there. Were we looking for more? I mean, and I, and I don't know. Because I had to think about this for a second and, and as I look at the evidence, it's an absolute yes. However, it was there, is there more that we need? At the board level that maybe we need to be engaged? I don't know. No, I'm just thinking out loud. I have no idea. Somebody want to end of the conversation?
Oh, we can leave that as a rhetorical question.
I think it's one of those things that we've talked about before where we could always be doing more, right? Like there's more that we could be doing. I would be interested to see what, you know, colleagues, what else do you think we could add to this? Because we do have a list of things here that we've been doing for the last few months.
Yes, in the college reports. And they did a really good job, I thought, on those. So thank you for that. All that. I know how much work that is. And then, yes, trustee Quinlan.
Sorry. One area, I think it's a part of our college and a part of our district that we, not the college, but part of our district that I've seen very little reporting on. We actually run the Northern Alameda Adult Ed Collective. I think President Best, Bestka from Laney is now the chair for that, the academic chair. We fund through the, the funding comes through this district for the state. And I've never seen reports at the board meeting on the status of that district. I don't, you know, maybe I've not seen all the board meetings, but there's very little information on that. And my belief is that's an area where we can grow our district by bringing those students into our programs. And I think that's certainly an equity issue, those students.
Okay, we'll make a note. That's something to think about. We can, and it can. Fit in here. It could be part of the approach. To DEISJ and action in there somewhere. And then B, continue to receive annual reports from the colleges and the district office on your efforts. I think that's definitely happening. No discussion needed there. And C, actively monitor district development and implementation. Of the professional development and learning center as part of the institutional effectiveness partnership initiative. And I think. Dr. Joker just mentioned that. Any comments, reactions on C? Yes.
Not so much on C, but it's.
Not so much on C, but it's the whole thing.
Yes.
As I, as I look at it, I'm trying to figure out, how is a board when we know we've made progress? There are skip measures and you could look at that, but frankly, those are pretty bureaucratic. And I'm not sure how well they really measure what we would call social development. I mean, maybe, maybe not. I mean, I think a lot of us are, let me speak for myself. I'm highly critical of the skip as a measure of kind of anything. And I don't know whether our reporting then tells us, oh yeah, we've really done a good job of eliminating racism in this area. And so I think that part of what we might want to be thinking about is, how would we measure it? What would it look like? And I think in the past, that's been just such a third rail issue in this district. Race, racism, what does it look like? How do we talk about it? Who's doing what? If we could figure out as a board and as a district, how to really have a productive conversation about. What does this actually look like and how would you improve it? What would it look like if you improved? The racial environment or social justice outcomes. Then I think we'd have some targets.
Yes.
We could develop a theory of racism within the district.
You can, you can do it on some stats too, in terms of how many discrimination complaints you get. You know, think.
Might or might not be helpful.
I'm just saying.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, that's one way. That's how sometimes you determine you have a problem and then how you respond to those complaints. How people feel once they've been, I don't know, concluded outside. I don't want to say resolved, but. That's a measure.
Work. And what I'm thinking is that partly we don't have a theory of racism that we use universally in this, in this district to say. Look, here's what racism looks like. Here's how we measure it. And here's why we've got it. All right. These are the institutional measures that we can do. To address these because we understand why we have it.
Yes.
And I think because we have not been a deliberative body in that regard yet. We've got some growth to do. I think, I, I think we could do a little work fleshing this out.
And what some colleges do as well is to come up with common definitions. Of the terms of diversity, of equity, of inclusion, of racism, all the other isms. So that when you use the words, you're all meaning the same thing. So.
So when I look at the, the ready to succeed.
Sorry, thank you very much. When I look at the measurement of ready to succeed, ready to invest in your education, looking at housing and transportation and. And job security and those types of things. When I think concretely about racism, that's what I think about. I think, well, do you have access to transportation? If you don't, that's a structural thing that we need to figure out. And so that's why I'm so eager to look at that readiness to invest and succeed. In part because I think it concretizes our understanding of DEI.
Yes, but DEI is not just racism. And I'm gonna stop because we, we'll get into the discussion here. It's, it's a whole lot more than that. I mean, that's what always comes to our minds. And that's what a lot of the time prevents people from wanting to engage because they think the whole thing's about race, but it's about so much more.
Thank you.
Okay.
My mic's not on, Doc. Actually, if I may make one comment, I, as I was listening to trustee Gonzalez Yuan, I was thinking of the. The college and the work that we have to do with our mission, vision and value statement. And so it seems like a starting point might be what have we defined at the college level? That's gone through a governance process that's had input on definitions around equity and social justice and. You know, as far as Berkeley City College, a lot of the language we've been talking about is about equitable student outcomes and, and can we see? That issues related to, let's say, racial justice, that there's not the gaps. Whether they're called opportunity gaps or achievement gaps, but nonetheless, that going back to your comment, um, in terms of what I wrote down of when we. All do better, we all do better, right? And I was thinking about the growth that we've had with HSI, with NAPZ. And so it just seems like going back to maybe looking at what we've done at the college level around the MVVs could be a starting point. As part of the discussion moving forward.
Do you want me to? Add an action step connected to what Dr. Gonzalez Yuan just stated? In here, you want to just me to keep that in the notes for next year?
Dr. Benjamin, the thing that I would love for us to raise up is the point you just made about. What we commonly now called intersectional analysis, that it's not just race. There's a confluence of factors here that we want to. Be looking at richly. And so. Yes and yes. And, and whether we add it as another action item, I don't know. I think this administration's pretty busy. Right now, so I'm loathe to add another thing.
Right, but you're gonna lose it if you don't. Why don't we just, I'll, I'll start a list for next time, for July. When, when we do.
And could you introduce your collaborator? I don't.
I will in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Oh yeah, my collaborator is my collaborator. Okay, um, let's see. So we've done those three. Any other comments on DEISJ? It's complicated. Next slide, please Sasha. Thank you. And this is a one we will have forever as well. Fiscal affairs. It is imperative, and we're in a much better place, I think, with, than we were three years ago on this. That the district has a secure and sustainable economic future. Therefore, the board will ensure financial accountability, responsibility and stability. That aligns with the student centered funding formula. And let's go to those five key actions you created, what you said you'd do to make sure that happens. First, provide direction for budget policy and priorities that support good decisions and clean audits by receiving reports each semester on schedule development. Et cetera. Comments on that one? How do you think you're doing? Okay. All right, B, monitor plans, strategies and our progress on the enrollment management plan to ensure goals are realistic. And realized. Have you had that participation? Yet this year? Okay.
Yeah.
Oversee the facilities bond and parcel tax programs to ensure compliance with stated goals by receiving detailed updates, et cetera. That has definitely happened. Monitor the district budget to ensure spending is within budget and meets the needs of the district. And then finally, work with the chancellor to ensure implementation of fiscal reforms. As recommended by the commission and state chancellor's office to develop and maintain fiscal stability for the district. I know you've been doing that. Okay. Any comments on this goal as a whole? Okay, I think you're probably in good shape on that one. Board goal four.
We're keeping it in though, right? Just because it'll be forever with us.
Yes, absolutely. So board effectiveness. Realizing the serious work facing the district and the need for the board to improve its culture. You know, we could have, well, no, I won't comment. I was about to say, we could have changed that. Because the board has improved this culture since we wrote this the first time. To achieve district and board goals, the board will continue to take bold actions to transform itself into a high functioning unit. That's where we made the change. Continue to take action. Eight key actions here. So let's see, how are you doing? Next slide, please Sasha. These first four. Establish clear goals and expectations for the chancellor and create a relationship for achievement of saying, did you do that? I highly suspect that you did. And B, uh, this is one we had a lot of discussion on earlier, three years ago. Delegation of authority to the chancellor. Have you improved there? Most definitely.
Yes.
Yes. All right, C, ensure development and implementation of a cycle for regular review and revision of board policies. And I think. Madam Board President, was that one of your pet things? How are we doing?
I think we're doing pretty good.
Okay, okay. And then D, BP twenty seven forty five, board self evaluation. I think you get an A. All right, you've done really well there. Because we went from none to often. Regularly. Next slide, please. For more, conduct a mid-year progress report. What are we doing now?
Mid-year progression.
Okay. Cultivate a strong, positive CEO board relationship that promotes the success of students. The colleges and the district. It's a love of, who said that?
Trustee Ewing.
Strengthen program for formal onboarding of new trustees.
New trustees?
What do you guys think?
Have you been on board? I know you have. I heard in the meeting we had the other day. Comments from the new trustees?
Improvements.
Well, you, you don't have anything to compare it to, but do you think anything was missing from it or? And you just started, so there may be more. I don't know.
Turn that one off. Both of them are on right now.
I'm just gonna add, um, uh, we received laptops and we had an onboarding sort of day. With a bit of training. Um, we have additional training coming up and then we have, uh, we're. Slated to attend a conference at the end of this month. So from what I've told the, the other trustees, um, they said that was amazing. So I think, I, I think it's working.
Yeah, so they have something to which to compare it, right?
Right.
Okay. Trustee Quinlan, any comments?
I've been satisfied with what we see so far. I mean, I, I still have a lot of questions and I probably will four years from now, but, uh, yeah.
You know more than you knew when you started.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then finally, maintain board meeting efficiencies achieved in twenty one, twenty two. With emphasis on time utilization. Have you gotten better? Okay, Bill. Have, have you guys gotten better on the time utilization? No.
He's shaking his head.
Shaking his head. Okay, any comments on this whole section, board effectiveness? I think make considerable progress there. All right, let's go to board goal five. And this was a new one for this year, organizational effectiveness. Support the chancellor's leadership in improving the effectiveness of college and district-wide planning, organization. Operations and dis, and decision-making. So we had four key actions. Let's see what they were. Contribute board perspective and development of P's. Two C D strategic master plan for twenty two to twenty five. So I'm out of the loop on that totally. I know you were working on it. So has that gotten started? How did you participate? Are you participating? It's not done yet, right? Okay. Comment, you're awfully quiet on this one.
I would say yes.
I'm looking back at our evidence. Yes, I mean, we just had the charrette. Hello.
Yeah, so it's, it's underway. You participated. It says to, all right, and then B. So that one's on planning. This next one. Is your statement of cooperation, continue to reinforce the district's commitment to the goals in the statement of cooperation to include adhering. To the same with members of district constituency groups and public in accordance with board policies twenty three. Forty five and fifty. Responses to that one? Doing okay? Good. Ensure that our aspects of instructional and administrative technology are maintained, supported. And benefit students and employees. If you had any reports on technology or?
Oh, it's still updating. We know, but we've had many reports, far more information than ever before.
Okay, you feel pretty informed about that. Yes, trustee Gonzalez.
I think we get updates. We get updates. I don't think in my history in this district, we've ever gotten a report that said everything is now functioning. And typically what we get is these major things are not functioning and we have a plan. To make them function.
Okay.
But we never get a report that says our plan has been successful. We are now functioning.
The follow-up.
And I think, and I, I mentioned this, you know, and I sort of always mention this. I think this is an opportunity for us to understand something about the district. If for twenty years we have been trying to do technology updates. We've spent tens of millions of dollars and we still. Have major gaps. And this is not a hit on the technology people. This is a hit on the system. That can't devise a program to get us to a report where we say, we're done. And I don't know that this board has a theory or the administration has a theory other than let's work harder. And I, so there's something systemic about the way that technology functions in our district and maybe all districts. I do not know. But there's something systemic that's broken that I don't think this board understands. And, and that's a little bit problematic for me. Well, it's more than a little bit because for twenty years, Bill, you and I have been waiting for. You know, the technology people to say, yes, done. And I, I don't get it.
Trustee Whitrow, was your, were you about to say something?
I don't know where we would put this, but. We have four colleges within a reasonable distance from each other. At one point in time, a very sizable percentage of our students. When they graduated and get their certificate or whatever, had gone to three of the four colleges. And we've had an issue that is a very serious issue. Covering a lot of our constituencies, having to do with class cancellations because we don't meet the productivity goals. But if we have tenant Alameda, tenant Penny and tenant Merritt, where aren't we combining them? Other than canceling all three, where aren't we combining them? So that we optimize our basic resources. Still understand we're supposed to hit seventeen point five percent or whatever it is. We're nowhere near that. And the finance guy that does bother me a little bit.
Yeah.
How, how do we put that into the goal?
Okay, other comments on technology?
Can I respond to a comment?
Of course.
Information systems is my. My backgrounds. And I, I hate to, to alarm anyone. But you're never gonna be finished with technology. You are always going to have something new come out. You are gonna have upgrades. When I started teaching, there was no world wide web. There was nothing, cell phones would look like a brick. Now they're flip phones. There's all kinds of stuff, so. That is just not gonna happen. You're never gonna get a box that you're gonna check and say, we're done. With technology. If you do, you will cease to provide the cutting edge types of systems. That trustee Quinlan brought forward when he started. Which is name changes because technology changes careers. There was no such things as expeditors, which is now kind of part and parcel. Of the internet to be able to get your idea out and market it. So new career fuels come from those technology changes. What this district. Has done, and, and this is where I, I say, I think it's a little bit different. Is that the, and, and maybe it's part of communication is we have completed things. We completed the migration to PeopleSoft nine point two cloud process that was brought to the board in January of twenty twenty one. We completed the migration of the finance module and of the. Asset management module that was included and reported to the board and was also included in our ACCJC reports. So there have been things that have been reported back to the board that we have brought forward with technology and maybe, like I said, because of communication and. You know, overload with a lot of different things. So I, I do take exception that we haven't completed anything. Because I think we have and can be documented in the, in the board docs. But I think what our, our issue is, is because it's such a large. When we talk about technology, that's including so much more. It's including what you're talking about. Trustee Whitrow. And it's something that the, the presidents and the vice presidents of instruction and I have talked about this last year. Is how do we work more efficiently? So we aren't offering the same classes at the same time. And that was an issue when I was a vice president. It's different now because it's much easier to change if it's in a electronic format or it's totally online. Or even if it's hybrid. And that's something that we've been working on. In fact, even looking at. A new software program that facilitates doing that, that didn't exist. that didn't exist five years or ten years ago. We sat down with green bar paper, going through lining out things. We're not there anymore. We're now on a online. So I don't think we're ever going to finish with technology and growth. But I do think that we can set up some milestones. And, um, when I got here in twenty-twenty-one at my first meeting, the board adopted a technology plan. That technology plan is still there. We're still following that technology plan. Uh, that was my first meeting. So it was April sixteenth, I think, or fifteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Um, but that was adopted. And so we're still following that plan, but maybe what we need to do is put something in that says review on an annual basis, a status of where we are in technology or, you know, just so that we can say, oh, yeah, we got that, that report versus it just being, you know, part of the agenda and adoption.
Um, yeah, cuz you wanna pay attention specifically on the organizational effectiveness piece of what they, so they 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 wanted four, four things, four areas. The strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sticking with their statement of corporation, technology, and then the fourth one is on finances, but with a little twist. This is about the budget model that was recommended by ACCJC and FICMAT. And it's also delineated in your functional map. So I've just segwayed into D. Do you think you made any progress on that one? Did you monitor it? Do you know what's happening with the budget model? Is a budget model being created? That kind of thing. Do you, you're up to speed? Sounds like, I mean, I see heads nodding. Okay. Okay. Yes, trustee Quinlan.
So when I was running for the board, one of the things I researched is some of the past development and the strategic master plans. Two thousand eighteen, there was a, um, effort to look at the technology issues and try and use those to, uh, enhance the response to the student-centered funding formula. And many of those have never been implemented. Uh, the one that is most, uh, probably that that would help us the most right now. And I thought was gonna be implemented at the, when we did, went to the new PeopleSoft was the degree audit that wastes a lot of time for our counselors trying to go through and determine whether our students have, uh, taken the degree, you know, have have completed their degrees. And then, uh, we don't collect, uh, for many students that have completed their courses, especially when we look at multiple colleges. Then, uh, we don't get credit for those under the student-centered funding formula. And there's a bunch of other ones in there too that I think we should look at again.
Okay.
So, um, we are, degree audit is in the works. Um, we've been working with the colleges. We have to get all of the transfer credit outlined into this, into the program. And that's taken a long time to get those rules done. We have, we are working with a consultant who's helping our, um, transfer, uh, transfer credit evaluators do that. And so, um, we're hoping to have a test run in the, um, next semester.
So progress.
Progress, yeah.
Hopefully.
We have a program. We're putting the data into the program. We just haven't gone live with the program.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, your hand?
So I really like the idea of doing an update and a review. And what's happening in that?
Mike?
Thank you. I'm so sorry. It's the informal setting. I like the idea of doing an update and review, showing what we've gotten done. What I think would be super helpful in that would be also then, what does that module allow us to do? And now, what are the things that we can't do yet? And the reason that I said what I was saying, by the way, and maybe I overstated it, I don't think I did cuz I didn't say we'd made no progress. It's just they're big parts that we still. The other day, Chancellor, you remind, I I I sent you a thing about a bill not being paid. And your response was, well, our finance systems are making it difficult to pay that bill, which is now over a year old or something like that. And that's been a perennial problem. There's something in the system where we still don't pay outside vendors in a timely manner. Okay, that's crazy. That's like to, that that's crazy. And apparently it's something in the the technology and the finance technology. So that's just an example of one of the things that feels like it's crazy-making and should have been fixed decades.
And probably should have. And Royal is your hand up? It is not. I see it slightly, slightly raised. Okay. We're almost at a two-minute break. So take me to the next one, Sasha, please. This is another new goal for this year. Safety and security, an important goal. Board decisions will be strongly guided by considerations of health, safety, security, environmental sustainability. Let's go to those five key key actions. Support policies and procedures and practices to ensure that the physical and mental health and safety of students, employees, and when affected, the community shall be of the highest priority. Reactions to that? Are you recalling anything that you've done in the last six months around this? Oh, you had, um, there was a policy that you guys created around health and safety. Am I remembering that right? And you had, it was a resolution. That's what we were talking about when we did this one. I, eh, help me. Yes, yes. And and some things were supposed to happen as a result of the resolution, and that's where this A came from. Okay, that's just a reminder. We're halfway through the year. I'll go to B. Receive, you don't expect me to remember these things, do you? Receive regular updates on the implementation of the district's health and safety resolution. There you go. All right, I won't ask if you've done that. I know it's coming. C. Receive and update the board policy on environmental sustainability and make changes to reflect current reality and opportunities. Did that happen? Excellent. Oh. Did not.
We we brought that up at the last meeting that that, uh, policy has not been revised since two thousand seven.
There's a committee that's working on that. The decision was made that just a little background history. The board policy was not migrated from the old system to the new system and renumbered. So that was the first thing. So when we were looking at the mission statement, um, trustee Ewing said, we had a board policy that spoke to sustainability. And I said, it's not out there now. So we went out and we found it under the old system that it had never been renumbered. So that's why I never got carried forward. So a committee has been established. That was near the end, I think, of November of last year. Um, and it's being spearheaded, um, by a faculty member at Merritt College that has a sustainability, um, student uh, committee. And so they are to start meeting this year.
Okay.
And faculty will be back eh, the end of January. I think classes start on the twenty-sixth, and we have flex day on the seventeenth. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Quinlan, for that reminder. Uh, D, receive annual, an annual update on district efforts regarding sustainability initiatives, green projects, community collaborations. Has that happened yet? All right, upcoming, still got six months. Expect, expect that district facilities are maintained in a manner conducive for learning, teaching, and working. There's an expectation there. We were careful how we worded that one. Okay, Dr. Cindy.
So I have a thought, uh, and a question. We do so well when we have a board goal dedicated to a particular project item as today's meeting shows. I feel like facilities needs its own goal. And I know that I don't think we can change it for twenty-two, twenty-three. But I really believe and I really think we absolutely have to laser focus on facilities.
Okay, we'll make a note for next time. Any other reactions there on the health and sa- safety and security? Kinda, okay, a little more to do there. Next slide, please. It's time for a break. And you get five minutes. That's why I got my phone. I'm gonna, you hear this bell? Better be in your seat. We're gonna start without you. Yes.
So on, on the sustainability goal component of it, I'm not sure what action, what role the board can take here, but it strikes me that the greatest opportunities we have are not our facilities in relationship to environmental sustainability. They're not the facilities, but they're the curriculum. Now, the board doesn't do curriculum. That's the academic senate. That, but is there something we can do programmatically to encourage that? Not interfere with it, but to encourage the development. Because that's where all the dollars are. That's where all the people are. That's where all of the training will be. If we're gonna train people for a green economy, if we're gonna train the engineers and the policymakers, that's where it's gonna happen. And it strikes me that we need to be thinking, how do we encourage that without interfering with it?
You put it, you make it a board policy.
Well.
And it, it has to be implemented. That's why you have administrators, right, even the academic senate. There are ways. I mean, you, these are established mechanisms.
I I think that's right. And I'll just, you know, when we did that board policy back in two thousand seven on sustainability, I remember Carolyn Van Putten was the board, the the academic senate president at the time. And she said, trustee, that is not your purview, hands-off. Don't even have a policy about educational program. And rather than fight her on it, I just like, all right, look, we'll get through what we can get through. But I think as as Dr. Belucian goes through this with Dr. Brown, those are the two faculty leaders who've taken the the leadership. I I think Chancellor, it would be great for you to give them the charge, meet with them and encourage them to build that in as some component of it cuz I think they're excited about building it out. They just need the support. And if they knew that this board was behind them in that effort, I think they would be more encouraged.
Okay, yes, sir. Trustee Quinlan.
Um, so I had a conversation with, uh, Dr. Belucian the other day about this very matter. Um, while we cannot dictate, uh, educational policy or curriculum, what we can do is create opportunity for that curriculum to be practiced. And that means we have an eight hundred million dollar bond fund with all kinds of construction that's gonna have an impact on our campuses and gonna have an impact on our community. And how those, that construction, uh, impacts our communities and the role it plays in the communities environmentally, I think is something that will provide opportunity for our environmental sustainability programs to flourish and provide opportunities for students, for work-study jobs, for, you know, different types of, uh, learning experiences that it would be out of the classroom and in the real world.
Okay, thank you. Five-minute breaks during the timer. Oh, is there another comment?
I just had one, one comment, and I I failed to mention it when we were talking about, um, diversity and access to DSIA. Um, we are pursuing, um, under the auspices of human resources, uh, conducting a equity audit. Um, and under that equity audit, there are several things because we were saying, how are we going to know? How are we going to evaluate if we're making progress? And and so that will be coming, uh, to the board for approval, um, depending on what the the cost factor is, but I'll be bringing that forward. But we've had discussions on that prior. Um, Dr. McKinley and I with the, a company that has been doing this and has a pretty extensive background on it. So just wanted to to note that there has been some progress in that area, not just, um, putting it down in paper and not following it up with action.
Okay, thank you. Five-minute break. Only five minutes. Starts now.
Is that the right time, seven forty-three? Okay, we send that to Sasha.
Man, I'm on, I think it's good I'm on my, the open network and my props.
Yeah.
If Sasha has, she'll, she'll send it for us. Sorry about that.
I can't skip those. I gotta move.
Let's get started. Yeah. Okay, I want to thank you, board members, for your participation in our last, uh, in our first, uh, segment, and now we move to the second portion of this, which has to do with the hiring of the permanent chancellor, you have some decisions to make. And this, we're gonna try to really get through this i- in a timely fashion, because we have a, a lot for you to consider. But, um, Dr. Cindy Miles will take you through this part, and I, I want to introduce her, but before that, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you again in a, in a search, in a formal search, because we've done those teeny ones for you. So, um, this one is really important, it's the most important thing that a, that a board does, really. I mean, it's serious, it has such an impact on the institution. And we want to make sure it's done right, and, and you're deliberate in that, and so Cindy's gonna walk you through what we've prepared. And some of you who've been on the board know Cindy, because she's, she's, we've worked together for you before. Cindy is the retired, uh, Dr. Miles is the retired chancellor of the Grossmont Quea Maka district, she, uh, retired
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, and I just said, come with me. So we did a lot of work together when we were, uh, both employed. She chaired the CEO board one year, and then I was the year after her. And we got a lot of stuff done, because we were kind of working together to, to move the organization and get some things done that we wanted done personally in the state, and we were successful, and she's a really, really hard worker. In retirement, she's doing work with the Aspen Institute with the, the other CEO one, national one. Yes, and so she has lots of good things going on, and I give you now, Dr. Miles, to talk to you about your permanent chancellor hire.
Good evening, everyone, it's a, it's a genuine pleasure to be with you, and the truth of what Dr., you know, the, the rest of the story is that whither Dr. Benjamin goes, I will follow. Because I'm as wise as you are to know the best in the land, to do work of the heart and of the mind, and so it's a real pleasure to work with Helen and then to be with all of you. Thank you for this, and I, and I also will just do a shout out to the accrediting commission, because I, I did that interesting interim for seven months last year, after you stole Dr. Drucker. And so I stood in for seven months as the interim president for ACCJC, and that's where I got to work very closely with trustee Reese and, uh, know that.
Clearly, Dr. Miles, neither you nor Dr. Benjamin know how to retire.
Retirement was not our plan. It was to do work in a different way and, and different impact, and it's, it's very, it's very fulfilling, so I appreciate that. Um, thanks for this opportunity, let's move to it. What you see on the list before you are some of the items we want to run through tonight with you as it pertains to the chancellor hire, so the clarifying and, and just really underscoring the board's role in this process. And we want to review, to that end, we want to review with you your board policy 2431. And our review of it suggests, it is our recommendation, that some changes are needed in it. And that's your first step toward making, uh, progress in this hire, is to look at your policy, because you need, if you have a standing policy, you need to follow that policy, and if it's not what you are in agreement, and it's actually not compliant with some of your prac- current practices, and we have some other recommendations for improvement that we would suggest to you. So then, we would need to talk about, should you decide to make changes in that policy? And we'll, we'll walk through, you've seen the documents in advance that we sent to you, redlined some of the things that we're looking at. We'll go through them step by step, so you can tell us what you want to change. And we also met in, in, um, advance, talking through this, we wouldn't be bringing these to you had we not met with President Delphin Pilk, so thank you for that feedback, and, and know that we're not just pulling this stuff out of our ears. We would talk with you then about the process whereby the changes in that policy could be done. And then we'll want to hear your thoughts about the start date, you know, if we're gonna look at it, get serious about a timeline, we need to think, see where your collective, uh, minds and hearts are as it pertains to start date, length of the posting, you know, how long we want it, you know, there's a lot going on, we can talk about that. And, uh, should you want any transition period, those sorts of things. So that's our agenda as it pertains, so jumping right in. Yep, keep us moving, Sasha, that's great. So your gra- your authority as it pertains to the chancellor hire, I think is no surprise to you. But it is, you know, your premier job in terms of any employees, that, that your chancellor is your only hire, your employee. And it is also authenticated in our ACCJC accrediting standards, now the standards are under uh, revision right now, but there, I can guarantee you this, the, in some form of this, it will stand. So it's your to have a clearly defined policy for selecting and evaluating the CEO, and then referring to your own board policy here that states it. And it's also obviously codified in ed code that your responsibility and, and, you know, title fight regulations. So we can move this, so we're gonna jump straight into the policy. Your 2431, walk you through what's existing and what we're recommending to you for consideration for revisions in this policy. So the opening paragraph, no changes in that. And, um, just, it's stating what we already talked about, you have the authority to do so, and you're, but I think it's important to underscore this language that's talking about being fair, open, and complying with relev- uh, relevant regulations, I think you're, that's your value shining through there. That it's a fair and open process. Okay, next slide. So changes that we're starting here is the language as it stands, sig- it, um, requires that you're gonna have one or more public forums to provide input. We're suggesting language, our experience in running searches in other districts is that some, there's other methods by which to get employee and community engagement, and we've done this through surveys, focus groups. And this, this just gives you, um, optional language that you don't have to, you can do the forums if you wish, but there's multiple methods by, the point being, you're gonna want engagement and input, and you can define in relationship with whoever the consultants or if you're HR department. And bear in mind, as we're going through all of these, you're, you're constructing a policy to live past this. You're supposed to have life beyond the, your present circumstances, so that's why we're looking for some language that you'll see that we recommend to you that's more, um, open-ended and, and gives you flexibility. So that's why we're sugge- oh, go back just a little bit. And so, and also that that engagement can be more than, uh, just for the job description and the timeline, that it could be, maybe you want input about what are the needs, needs, necessities? What are the leadership priorities, what are the opportunities and challenges? That's what we typically see, the engagement with employees and the community and students. You'll see a strikeout, uh, apologize that it's down at the bottom where we just changed language from managers to administrators, it's more inclusive language. As we go through this, can we get feedback from you as we go along? So I'd like to hover here and see, if you're comfortable with these recommended changes, do you have thoughts, questions? Anyone not comfortable with making these recommended changes? That's a double negative. Is this okay? So I don't think we have, um, I mean, we can, you can take formal action, you know, President Polk, however you want to do that at the end, but if we can gather your feedback along the way, would that be an okay way to progress?
I, yes, that'd be great.
Okay, so it looks like we're good with this set of recommended changes. All right, next slide. Next section, no change. Throughout, we're recommending changing the language. We're seeing more understanding of the role of the committee that's used if you define it as a screening committee and not a selection committee, you are the selectors. And I think that just helps, in case there's any confusion. Because at the end of the day, you're making the decision, and I think that nomenclature can make that very clear. Do you, are you comfortable change, you know, with this language of screening committee? I'm looking at faces, right, please raise your hand, or if you are not. Yeah, yeah, search kind of feels like, you know, the, just the front end of it, but yeah, would, would you prefer search? And we're, certainly it's yours, we're open to that, but I just, so long as it doesn't say selection, I think it's better for you. What do you like? Stay with screening? Okay, thank you. Next slide.
Could I make a suggestion?
I'm sorry?
I was gonna just make a, a suggestion, we, we've done this before, kind of a, a thumbs up. I'm not sure, or no, and that'll just make it easier as we go through.
Okay. We can do a little thumbs, okay, good. I appreciate that. Um, so again, this is just the nomenclature, so I think we're good on that. Okay, this looks messy, but it, it is messy, but it's not as complicated as it looks. We're recommending that you consider modification, what the old policy said, the existing policy, to include, basically, this is about including trustees on your screening committee. It is, my understanding, this was your practice in the search that was conducted for the interim chancellor. And the permanent before? Ah, okay, so your last two searches at the chancellor level were not in compliance with your existing policy. So we're suggesting that you change it to, and, you know, we're suggesting three, that's, you know, fewer than your majority, so you can do that, we're also, um, in, uh, suggesting the addition of a confidential employee for the, you know, more broad representation. And, um, the rest is just, uh, I don't think there's any other substantive change here, yes. I don't. Ah. I see.
For 12 employees to get one seat on that committee seems quite a bit, and, um, so I'm not I'd love to hear the thought about it. Um, but definitely adding trustees to this process, I think is essential, and I think this is part of why we've struggled. I will say that I think it was the last two interim searches that we've had trustees, but not the last permanent.
I see, thank you. Ah, okay.
But I think that this is normal for districts.
It, that's been our experience.
I think it would be a, a real benefit.
It seems to help bridge that gap between this representative body then, and because you get that deeper look, those are, those are the trustees who are, you know, have that role on the screening committee. Then hear the larger conversations, and in many ways can convey that to colleagues, a deeper understanding. What was the, something else on the confidential?
I just wanted to say something on the confidential. It, for me, and most, the searches we've worked on have confidential employee representation. I think it's important, because it's a perspective that the other groups can't represent. And those people work in, I think probably human resources, report to the chancellor, they have jobs where they work with trustees and all that, so that's the kind of rationale for it, it's not about the number of people they represent. It's about, and that's, we talk about diversity all the time, here, here we are. And these people are not represented in this process.
That perspective is not, but again, it's, it's yours, so what is, it sounds like you're comfortable with the trustees being on it, yes? I got that with you, and the three is good. Okay, so it looks like we need to have a discussion about the confidential member, yes.
Yeah, I do have an additional, um, question.
Certainly.
And it's not, it's actually not a change, it's from the previous, that's, uh, state, that's still listed on there. I just wanted to, to ask if you could define what community member mean and how you select them?
The community members?
Yes.
They are, generally, a call is made out, you know, a public notice is sent out to your service area through your typical media channels to invite applicants, and they come to the board, and the board conducts interviews, you read, you, depending on how many you have, you can have a subcommittee screening them, or you can choose to interview them all, you may, you know, there's multiple ways to do that. You know, we could help lead you through some processes. Okay, thank you. Yes, trustee Winthrop.
The, um, community members. Trustees work in the community, you know, the people.
So in some ways.
In a role of identifying people in the community that we think would have a lot of common sense and orientation towards, uh, education. Uh, maybe the hiring side of it, or whatever, but, uh, I think it's very important, I, I would like to see definitely at least three community members on there.
Yeah, yes, and you, this, the way it's written here affords you up to three.
Yeah.
And it, what our experience is, it does bring, again, as Dr. Benjamin was talking about, it's diversity of perspectives. I think it also sends a message to the community that this hire is important to you, this isn't just for this institution.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Okay, so you're comfortable then with this language on the community member? So I want to go back to the question about the confidential employee.
I, I actually like the idea of the confidential employee, I think that the way that the screening and/or search committees have been comprised before, it's been weighted by votes, and I just feel like we're trying to culturally move away from that and really have pers- I think, I, I love the idea of perspectives rather than ratio of person and its representation against the constituency, so I do like, and the, and, and really, the confidential employee works often very closely with the chancellor or the chancellor's administrative team, so I, I really do think that that's a good idea.
We, we know that in, in many executive hires, you know, apart from a chancellor, you know, if it's a dean or vice president or a president, you'll often have the executive assistant serving on that screening committee. And if you don't have this composition here, you don't have the opportunity for that to occur. Now, we're not saying that has to be the, the person, but But there's no other place for that perspective to come in. Yes.
For the record, I'm not especially opposed to it.
Sure.
So I don't want to get into a huge, long debate about it.
Okay.
If it's like, yeah, everybody's good on this. I'm, I just raised it.
Yeah, it's a, it was, it's a very valid and fair observation. So we want to return then to see if we got a thumbs up on the confidential. I'm feeling waves going in that direction. You're, you're okay enough? All right, thank you very much. So then we'll go to the next one. This is new language that we're offering you for consideration. To actually, we, there's certainly always a discussion about confidentiality when you launch the process with a committee. But putting it in your policy really gives it more teeth, is, is as simple as I would say it. So, and it's clarifying the expectation that they're making a, if someone agrees to serve on this committee, it's an oral contract, that the confidentiality goes throughout the process, and a note that it says and beyond. When it's over, you don't get to go say who, you are not to say who are all the other applicants and talk about them. There is, there is a covenant of confidentiality that I think builds the integrity and respect and trust in the process. So a lot of what we're, you're going to hear from us is about building trustworthy processes. And should, and it even talks fairly sternly about if there is a compromise that's, that they can, an individual can be removed from the committee. Yes.
And so just a question, just to maintain, maintain, I guess, the perspectives, if someone is removed and maybe they're just the one out of that, you know, one to three, out of that category?
Yes.
Would you, would we be replacing them and should we have?
Typically, the answer, if, I would say no, because a typical process that we underscore is that you must attend, when you agree to be on the committee, you have to participate in all aspects. You can't come and go, miss meetings, send substitutes, so it's an all or nothing participation, so you would lose that. I haven't seen someone have to be removed. I think having it in and underscoring the importance of it, I think, has made a difference in, in the searches that I've seen. Yes. Thank you.
I got it. Thank you. Just so you know, our practice is we require a search committee members to sign a confidentiality statement.
Yeah, so you have a confidentiality statement that you do as well. Good. Well, this could be supporting that process.
That would support it, and maybe I'd recommend that maybe you could just say that, that we'll have to, to fill one out.
So.
An oral contract.
Oh, it's beyond the oral contract. Okay. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Or make, we'll, are making a contract. Maybe we could just say making a contract, and then the, the written piece is part of that initial meeting. How's that? Does that sound okay? Perfect.
And just for clarification for some of the new board members, especially trustee Johannes, since you asked the question. Usually at that first meeting, that's where we go over all of the rules and, and make the commitment, establish the calendar so people can make sure that they comply and, and not just on the fly, oh, gosh, I didn't know we had that meeting. So that very first meeting is where we, we do all.
It also establishes those expectations, right, when you take.
Exactly. So you understand at the very beginning what the expectations, and that's also at that time where they sign the document, the written confidentiality form. And, and the reason that's so important also is because, especially at this level, we may be getting sitting CEOs. And if they are not successful and they don't even make it to the finalist level, we don't want someone to say, oh, yeah, she applied, but she didn't even make it through the level. And they take that back to their campus, and that's just not what we want.
Precisely. Yeah, it's, it's very difficult to recruit good candidates if they don't have that protection. So, next slide. Good on this then? This section D is about this, the consultants, and so we're recommending a little bit more specificity about things that, you know, we're intending to do for you and with you, and that we think you should have as part of a policy. So it's more than serving the selection committee and facilitating committee members. And it's, so this list, you'll notice, is perform such functions as. So you can pick and choose from these, but we're talking about the things that we're discussing today, establishing the parameters, working with the board, working with the board to just the other details of the search, including a clear timeline. Providing training in the search process? Did you wait, did you have something?
I'll wait till, I'm sorry, Dr. Miles, I'll wait till you're, I just have two edits in the wording.
On this one?
Yeah, in this section, it's referred to the president and then also the college, and I suggest because it's a multi-college district, that it's the CEO and the district or the board.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes, so we'll change college to district throughout. I'm seeing what you're saying. Okay, thank you. All right, so let me go back to the substance. And so we're talking about, so there's potential for providing training for all involved, gathering the stakeholder feedback, some of what we were talking about, getting that input and engagement from your internal and external community, leading the development of the position announcement, done collaboratively with your media and communications department, as well as with your human resources, supporting human resources. It doesn't matter what you have by way of consultative help, your HR is going to be carrying challenge, you know, a lift on this, and we're here to help with that, but it's got to be participative in scheduling interviews, interactions with the applicants, conducting the reference checks on the finalists, and interacting on behalf of the district with applicants. So this is just kind of fleshing out the potential of the role of the consultants a little bit more. Any questions, concerns about this, other than the, yes?
Just thank you for that specificity. It's hard to believe that all we had there was that consultant served the selection committee and facilitate meeting.
It sort of threw us off when we saw, we're like, is that, okay?
So thank you for that.
If that's all you want, but didn't seem very substantive. Yes, trustee Yan.
So oftentimes, a search consultant will also beat the bushes and cultivate candidates.
Absolutely.
Is that?
Absolutely.
Where does that sit in this list?
Uh, I think we could, it's certainly something we will be doing.
I figured as much.
So we can make that, and so it's, we can add a line that specifies that. And recruiting, you know, we, we think in terms of formal and informal outreach that we do. Extensive, formal and informal.
Yeah, I would want to add that to the description so that it's not.
Good idea.
And then maybe something that says and other as divide, as, you know, so that it's not seen as a definitive list, and then you do something, you go, well, that's not in the policy, why are you doing that?
Oh, no, exactly. And I, yeah, that's why I languaged it, but maybe it's not clear enough when I said such functions as. So we, but we could add a terminal one that says.
And other functions.
Other functions as the board desires.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
When you're talking about a consultant and the research kind of thing, does that include headhunters?
I'm sorry? Does that include headhunters?
Headhunters.
Headhunters is a euphemism, I think, for search consultants.
What do you mean? I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Yes, the answer's yes.
It does include it. Okay. So they, in a whole bunch of spectrums, there will no talent out there and whether they can fit.
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Take a look at Judy, take a look at.
Definitely.
Okay.
Talent matching. Absolutely. Thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll do some edits here. This will come back to you, obviously, to look at again, once we incorporate all your changes. Anything else on this one? Well, okay, good. We'll move to the next. This is just nomenclature change on the screening committee. But it's good for you to know that your policy talks about having an EO officer or designee from HR assigned to the project. I think you do that with all of your searches. But it's good for the public, you know, your policy is telling your values, and it makes that clear to the public that it's there, so I think it's good to be included. And next. This was a language in the old policy or your standing current policy that talks about the board of trustees not getting involved in the selection committee and but you could have representatives meet with them and all kinds of things. This language is not necessary if you've got direct representation. And I think much more effective outcomes that this was, this process was trying to achieve. Okay, good, so we'll delete this. All right, next. This was, is really just cleaning language for clarity. This section seemed to be not only the changing of the language to the screening committee. I'll call your attention to the third line and the sentence that begins notwithstanding. The intent we're reading in this was for the board to be able to make a change. Should they be dissatisfied, should you be dissatisfied with the finalists that come to you from the screening committee? And so the, the existing language was giving you the opportunity to reopen the process and say, no, this pool is not sufficient to our liking, we want to go back out. That's what item I means, or the little one, and then the little two is or go back and ask the screening committee to look again at their pool, and if they found other candidates that they would deem adequate, meeting the expectations to send other candidates forward. So that's, this was some of your existing language, and we just tried to clarify it a little bit more with nomenclature. You had a question, trustee Johannes? No?
Do I don't, maybe it's coming up. Just to clarify, do we have sort of like a timeline if we do reopen as, as far as how long, we should reopen it for maximum time, minimum, things that.
We can, you know, if, if we were, we're, our goal is to not have you in that circumstance. Okay? Should we come to that level? We would need to look at why that happened. So it's hard to give you any advice as it pertains to that, but we certainly would if we were at that, at that juncture with you.
And usually, trustee Johannes, we put something in the, the flyer that goes out that says until field. So that leaves that open if the board says they want to extend for a week, two weeks, a month until field. So it doesn't tie you to a specific deadline, which is what I think you're trying to accomplish in the board policy, is to give you that flexibility.
Well, the board, yeah, the board has the discretion to change its timeline at any point. But it's, it's good for the public for you to establish this and then sit with it. Yes, trustee Gonzalez Yan.
The language of shall recommend three to five. I'm wondering about that language. And in my experience, we've sometimes got, gotten pools that were great. We had two. And like, the committee was like, uh-uh, it's just two. We really, we really have two. And language that says they must move forward a third candidate is, I, I don't think necessarily serves us. So if we're going to make that mandatory language, I would change that three to two, or I would change the shall to may. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on why shall three to five?
The, our experience, and the rationale behind this is that the screening committee is not the, is not the hiring committee.
Yeah.
When you, they begin to delimit who they're sending to you, they're putting their thumb on the scale to say this is, you only get these choices. I would think that as a board, you want the broadest possible choice among great candidates because this is your hire. I wonder if we might be able to find language that would address your concern, because it's about, I mean, I think that that can happen. I haven't seen it happen at the, at this executive level. But perhaps there's a way to come up with language that would say, in extraordinary circumstances with, because you have three trustees sitting there with you. They could convey to their colleagues on the board, we have a situation here, I think we can, you can trust that we only have two to bring you, but they're two really, really good ones.
So that raises another question about confidentiality. So normally confidentiality holds to that committee, and three trustees can't communicate with the other four trustees what the heck is going on. So we need to decide, does confidentiality for the board on that committee carry to the rest of the board? Or is it permitted for those three trustees, once we are now in closed session, to share the details of a search? And that just, you know, I'm a little bit worried about opening up that conversation and allowing it because then it compromises the discussion within the committee.
Certainly.
And so people might not speak freely, thinking that, oh, now I'm screwed. You know, the rest of the board will know I oppose so and so.
Right.
So I think there's a.
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying that the whole, so I'm raising two questions.
Yeah, you are.
One is number, and the second now is, oh, confidentiality, what does that mean here?
Right, but perhaps I need to say this differently. It's not so much that they would come and tell you about the candidates, but their presence, the presence of three trustees on this screening committee, should they come to a circumstance where they needed to, where they said, we've really, we've, we've really only got two that we want to advise to the board, refer to the board. The very fact that they're there is tacit understanding from a board perspective that I think could give you trust. If you put language that said, under circumstances, if the committee says, but you know, to your point, all you'd have to do is just put two.
Well, and so again, if, if the three trustees on the committee came to the full board and said, we really only have two, now you violated confidentiality. It's just the lawyer brain at me.
I don't think they come at the time that the trust, that they're meeting and coming to a decision because they are part of that vote. But in your closed session, once the committee, the trust, I'm sorry, the trustees, the candidates come to you for an interview, then I think they're free to say in there, this was at that point after the fact. But not during, not to confer with you during the actual process. But later on, they could say, we, we're confident with the people who were forwarded. But you also have the ability to bring forth up to three at your own discretion. You could bring up others.
That's true. Item two has you.
But that's a.
Yes, but trust, yeah, but trustee Gonzalez, when is recommending that we?
I, I don't support putting two in there.
It makes me very uncomfortable.
I don't want to say out loud that that, that can be so manipulative. Yeah, I'd keep the three in.
I like that.
Yeah, you, you don't want to know what we know happens.
Right. Thank you for asking that.
When there are two.
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay. Right, right, right. Okay. Well, thank you for asking this question.
Yes, sir.
Because that's really important. So, so then I think I'm going to, or I think you just answered my question, because what we don't want to do is we don't want to violate our own policy. So if they cannot suggest three, then we can go to F2 and the, at its own discretion refers to the board, not the screening committee, right? So if there are only, oh, no, though. Can we? So then it would end up, so if the committee, the screening committee ends up giving us two.
If the committee, if the committee only gave you two, you would have a failed search.
Okay, but so notwithstanding, at any point, the board may decide to, let's go to F2. To request the screening committee to review the candidate's pool and at its own discretion, the at its own discretion refers back to the board, not the screening committee, right? It, well, the board may decide.
We need to clarify that language, yeah, at the board's discretion.
Right, so then we could actually bring in another finalist. Right, so it circumvents actually violating the board policy. If the committee only brings two forth, we could go back to the screening committee and at our own discretion, bring in another finalist.
Yes.
Is that, okay, okay.
It's irregular. And frankly. And frankly, if you're in that kind of a situation, you've got a problem. Because you're gonna, you're teetering on the edge of losing trust in your process within the institution. Yes, sir.
So my question is kind of a follow-up what trustee Gonzalez brought up. We have three people that are trustees that have gone through the entire interview process. I think we need some really explicit documentation about what those people can bring forward from the interview process to the select, to the final selection. Just because I think people's natural tendencies is to bring their feelings about who they feel is best and to supplement that with information they heard in the interview process, in that discussion. And so I don't, I, I don't know if there's a way to do that, to define what can be brought forward and what can't be brought forward.
And you may want to speak to this as a professional. So I'm going to yield to you now.
Thank you. Yeah. So they, they should not be bringing anything forward in the confidential process whatsoever. Uh, they should only after the, as, as Dr. Benjamin said, after the process has been completed and they have sent forward their recommended slate of finalists. And then they enter into the, the actual selection phase, right? Not the screening phase, but selection phase. That's when they can then enter in and, you know, vote for who they want to vote for or not. But they should not be, they should not be sharing any, any of the process in the screening itself. Because it's confidential, even though they're board members.
What's, something I heard long ago about these processes that may be helpful as well. Because I know you're going, but how could they not? Well, they're going to bring their own. Certainly it's going to weigh on their minds and their decision-making processes. But the screening committee has a different job than you do. They will look at the candidates through a certain lens. You're going to be looking at a different lens. You, through that board lens, through that this is our primary employee, through looking at the policy level for the, for the district. So the lens with which the kind, the questions that are asked, we ensure that they're different, that there's a, a different perspective that's brought. So the board members will be participating in two perspectives. They'll keep their own opinions and ideas. But it was, it was more about having your trust in the, what was happening there by their presence is what I was talking about earlier. Yes.
Dr. McKinley, thank you for that clarification. I think that's actually really helpful.
Yeah.
And what's confusing for me in that, so I think, you know, like, I've been trained in confidentiality. I know how to keep confidentiality. And so I think that's clear. I think what's been confusing sometimes in a search process and then in a selection process is the consultant will often violate confidentiality. The consultant will tell you, oh, well, in the search, there was this thing that happened. And they might not give you particular detail, but how many times have you seen a consultant say such a thing in a hiring process? I've seen it probably five times. It's like, huh, well, they just shared something from the search process. That does happen. And I think we just need to be really clear. No, that shouldn't happen. Then the board, when it's presented with its slate of three to five candidates, really is now tabula rasa, starting all over, new search or new process. And we need to understand that that's what we're doing. But I think it is a challenging mental exercise for the three who came forward to now start over. And I think that's the challenge. There's a cost to it, but I think the benefit of having them there in the front end is outweighs the, the challenge. But I think that's what we're explicitly saying here, is it not colleagues? That we're saying that the three trustees who are on that are now bound not to bring it up and to basically forget it. Ha ha.
The trustees on this committee would represent us, right? So we would be putting our faith in whoever's on this committee to be able to carry out what it is that we want in a transfer.
With a very specific set of rules that we're talking about. And I'm glad I just asked the question because it was a little confusing to me, given the behavior I've seen from consultants. Not you.
Yeah.
Modifying your statement.
Thank you. Other consultants.
Any other? So where are we landing with this? Are we, are you able to find comfort with the three to five?
You know, that I would say is if two, F2 could be clearer.
I think we need to, yeah, clarify that language that, that it's saying that the board can
Right.
At its discretion. I heard that. So everybody good with those changes that are made?
Well, so can I ask a question about two? Have you ever seen that in any other district? Where the board can reach down and say, we want that one and that one too?
I have.
Okay. I just thought that was a weird thing here, but if you think it's normal, I'm good.
Didn't say I think it's normal. We don't, that's yeah. I don't recommend it.
Well, I remember when that was added.
Ah. And what were the circumstances, if I may?
The board having been excluded from the search, didn't trust the committee.
Didn't trust.
And said, well, we don't trust them. It's the same old fools making the same old decisions over and over again. We want more control. And I think that with this modification of what we're doing, we actually could eliminate that. I think I, I personally don't think it's necessary.
Interesting.
But I'm just one person, that was the history of it. I remember. That was the history of it. And maybe it's not needed. I don't know. What do you all think?
That's interesting because often a policy is written about a certain specifics. Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah. It may not, so you might be, it might suffice. And frankly, what I've seen in other policies, it's just the, then the item, the item one to reopen the search if you're, if you are not happy with the pool that's, or the finalists that are brought to you. That certainly could be, it could be delimited to that. F2, what do you think? Or do you need it?
Can I? So just two questions. I guess the first would be that last clause. Does it have a value add before, before we rush to, I think we, we need to think about, might that have a value add? And secondly, after, after the committee does its work, could the consultant and the HR person and the trustees share the information? This goes back to your question. I don't want to complicate it, but it's a thought. Share the information that they might have to the board in a closed session after the screening committee has already done its work to give the board as much information as possible going into the interviews. I mean, that, that takes it away from the tabula rasa for sure. But again, is there really, I don't know. I mean, is there a disadvantage to actually? Since they're representative of three, they have a code of silence or code of silence until the end. And then when you get to the end, since they're the representative of the board, just sharing that information.
Yeah. Which the information that we're accustomed to sharing is we had this many applicants. These met minimum, this many met minimum qualifications. You know, we can do some demographic disaggregation, that sort of thing, if interested in. The committee chose to interview this many. And this is, these are the finalists coming forward. We generally don't go beyond that.
Okay. Okay. Then the board should be, okay. And, and again, back to the value add question, there would really be no value add to bringing more information to the board. No, right? Because then there's a, there's a different lens.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. And it, and it does start to send a message of distrust to the, to the screening committee.
Okay. So just that second question.
And you're going to get a whole lot more information than the screening committee gets. You have the reference checks, you have the background checks, you're going to have a deeper dive into the person than the committee had. Cause the committee doesn't get any of that. They can do all the searching on the internet. We don't verify or validate anything for them. That's for you. Because they're just screening based on what they read in the application, hear from the, I almost said contestant, candidate.
And then, and then just the second question, which was, or the first question, which was, is there a value add to taking away this, that last clause? Or is there a value add for the last clause before we take it away, I guess?
Yes. Let's, let's get our professional to answer that.
We'll see if you still
I have an opinion and he has expertise.
Well, we'll, we'll see if you're still calling me professional. I want to finish. All right. So the question then would be though, will the board have enough, would the board have? I don't think so. Enough information to actually reach down in the pool and say, give me these other two folks. Unless they were using prior knowledge, which they're not supposed to use.
Right. They'd have to go back through all of the candidates, which would be like participating as a member of the screening committee. And you've got three already doing that.
That's right.
I don't think there's any value added because you have three in-person representatives on that committee.
Yeah. This is, this is kind of old thinking that went with the prior policy. Yes, sir.
So when you get to the final decision, um, I'm assuming that you don't want a four, three vote or a five, four vote, that that's a problem.
Yes, sir. But the majority does stand. You know, we have, we have discussions with the board about those kinds of things. Should that be the circumstance?
So you'll have those discussions beforehand or afterhand?
In the middle of it. In the hot middle of it.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to me that that would create divisions on the board as you go forward.
Absolutely. And think about the candidate.
Right.
Who wants to take a job with a split board?
Well, they probably, I'm, they shouldn't know that in the future. They probably would, but
Well, the boards are reported, the votes are reported publicly. So we typically have conversations to see if there can be alignment of thought around one candidate. Yes.
So just so I'm clear, this board knows that if the screening committee does not give at least three, then the search is a failed search, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you can re, I, I was speaking perhaps a little hyperbolically. It would, you can reopen it.
Okay.
And what happens in those circumstances is you can say that the candidates can reapply, you know, through the consultants, we can talk to them and say, encourage them to reapply. Because you, you know, in some ways it's
Okay.
It can be some continuity, or we can say, we're going to extend this process, keep those that we have and have others. But we try really, really, really hard to not get to that place. It gets messy.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can you give a ballpark figure on how long this process lasts?
We're going to talk timeline. If, if you don't mind, that's a next agenda item after we go through. That's the perfect segue, but we're not quite there. All right. Okay. So what I think I'm hearing, let me calibrate with you. It sounds like we're going, that you're comfortable staying with three to five, but we're looking at removing item F2. Correct? So there'll be some rewording, probably, you know, so that it's all one sentence at the end. Okay? Good, everybody? Awesome. All right, next. This is giving, it's opening up the option. It does, so the previous language obligated you to do site visits? This gives you the option, should you choose to. But there are other inquiries that we highly recommend. I personally don't think site visits are very useful and they're very disruptive. But that's completely up to you. Maybe you've had different kinds of experiences. Yes, sir.
So I really like the idea of opening up other inquiries. But I also prefer to leave the site visit as a mandatory. I think my experience in participating in, I don't know how many hires now, is that if you don't do a site visit, you're almost completely dependent on your consultant for the reference checks. And it's not that we don't trust you. But I've been in situations where the board has been misled. And we're not talking about you. We're talking about a policy. So I think having eyes and ears on the ground, there is no substitute for it. And I think that had we engaged in more thorough site visits with some chancellor candidates who I won't specify, we would have had a better match. We would have had a better understanding. Uh, I can think of at least one hiring process where the board violated its own policy mandating site visits and the result was fairly the result was regrettable. And so I'm not comfortable without that because in those instances, if the board in fact is divided, having a mandatory policy that requires us to go and do our due diligence then means that the board must follow policy and can't just say, well, we like this candidate, whatever. So that, that's my experience. Um, so I would be really supportive of the idea of having other inquiries as a possibility. But I'm not comfortable myself with reduce, removing the shell.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I am very comfortable with removing the shell. I like the idea of May authorized site visits. I like the other inquiries. I think that the board should decide. I do think that you don't necessarily capture as much information as one, I think theoretically thinks they capture by doing the site visits. Think there's so much information, there's so much communication between the field, whether you're a faculty, whether you're classified staff through unions across the state, that information can be gathered informally or formally. And I also did a search to see how many other districts have site visits as a policy. And I only came up with one, Polymar. I did not see any others. So I mean, that says, that says a few, if, if it was so effective, I think I'd see many more colleges using it. And so I think what we try to get from it, or what people think they're getting from it, isn't necessarily something that is either so important or weighty and/or not something that they can't get in other, to use the word disruptive ways.
And just a comment, um, we're doing a national search and we could possibly get three candidates that are out of state and the cost would be prohibitive. I feel as the CEO of the organization now and fiscal responsibility, putting the May in allows you, does not mandate that you can't, but it gives you the option of, of both ways. And as important as it is, um, I, I do, I would recommend the May. Um, and the board can make a decision on that. But if you have that, you shall. Then if the funds aren't there to support that, then you're going to have to go back and change your policy.
Thank you. Looks like trustee Yin.
So mandating a site visit doesn't require a site visit of all the finalists. You could do a site visit with the finalist. So that would be one thing. If we eliminate this as a mandatory, I think it's really important that board members have the ability to independently do their due diligence. And in some situations, that's seen as inappropriate. So a board member who says, oh, well, okay, here's our finalists and I know the union leader of that district. So I'll call them up and have that conversation. Would that be seen as inappropriate? If that would be seen as inappropriate, then we need If that would be seen as inappropriate, then we need some mechanism so that this board making the final decision is not completely dependent on whoever we hire as the consultant. And that's been a problem because sometimes the consultants, they've got a vested interest in making sure you do the hire. They get a better track record, blah, blah, blah. I've just seen it happen too many times where consultants aren't really serving our interests. And I'm not picking on any individual consultant, but I think it's a structural problem that disempowers us by making us dependent on somebody else's report of the, of the reference check. And I think that's problematic.
The, I, I, I wouldn't disagree if you were feeling that you were cut off from any other source of information than what is spoon fed to you for, you know, as it might seem. What I've seen more commonly is you'll, you'll have lots of people giving you lots of opinions. They will be unsolicited coming to you, giving you all kinds of information about all of these. Once the candidates are made public, you'll get more information. Now sifting through these, you know, and the different, because everyone has a bias that is innate. What I can say to you, and, and you're building a policy and, you know, we're talking about the current process we're undergoing, but you're also trying to build a policy that stands for the future. We conduct, our pathway that we do for reference checks, we do not simply call the lists of references. We call everyone we know. And we know a lot. We call on and off the list and we get the, the signature releasing our ability to do that from a candidate. And should they not be willing to let us do that, you would know that. I think it's also been a case with, with social media, with the kind of information that comes in so rapidly now that you you're needing trusted eyes and ears. You need to, but you're going to be sorting through lots and lots of feedback that you get. I, I, I want to respect your experience. If you had positive experiences, trustee Yin, on doing site visits, they, that was not my personal experience. And they were dog and pony shows and I did not see in anything other than performance art and then a great disruption to that candidate's campus from the kinds of.
So you may be quite correct, and I haven't done a site visit, and so maybe I'm over expecting what I might get. Here's really what I'm looking for is one, what our board feels about trustees individually doing their due diligence and then bringing that to deliberative process. If our board is comfortable with that, then let's have a policy that allows for that. If our board is not comfortable with that, then let's have that discussion now and then set up a policy whereby we're not completely dependent on whatever consultant happens to be the person we hired. And that's my concern, that, that we get along, that we agree on what that process looks like, what's inbound, what's outbound, and that we are fully empowered as representatives of our public and not dependent only on a consultant.
So I have two responses. One is we will put in here whatever you want. So we're not trying to influence you in one way or the other, just trying to give you both sides. That's the one thing. It's your process. Two, I think it'll get so messy if trustees start calling people. I think that's the biggest mess you could have. And then when you start calling individuals and it's not in an official capacity, maybe we could come up, well, the board needs to speak to that. But that's too many people calling. Too many, we'll be calling all these different people you're calling, then we get in a room and try to sort all that out. A union member's perspective is going to be different from an academic senate member's perspective, from an administrator's perspective. If board members are going to do calling, then we'd like to, you know, give you a list of people to call, so you can get some kind of balanced responses. And that's what we try to do. So if you do it, it would have to be in a balanced way and not in a way that you get maybe biased reports. It could be one thing somebody did, the kind of calling, we end up calling like 15 or 20 people on a, for a permanent chancellor. So you get a lot of, lot of views. So you have to be willing to do something like that to make sure you're getting a balanced perspective and not the angriest person in the world at that person. Of the person who's happiest with that person. So that's, that's the goal of, of the calls.
I think, I'll just say that, thank you for sharing that, because there was a point, a moment where I was like, you know what? That's a really good idea. But then helping me balance that up, because it's not a good idea actually, but I understand exactly where you're coming from in terms of wanting to get as much as possible. And I think there's a, there's a part of it where there's so much available out there in terms of social media. So you can, you can pretty much find anything about anyone, bad mostly, good. So that comes in and, you know, we're going to have to leave the two are very diligent consultants. Hopefully we make good hires with consultants going, you know, forward, but, okay. I don't know. I think it's.
Others? I, I think what the resonance that I'm hearing across all of you is the, the desire to have a breadth, you know, to get the real information, if you will, you know, all that you can. These are tough decisions. We understand. So I, but I think you need to come together. Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry, I keep interjecting, but I think there are also considerations with regard to equity. That, for instance, if we do screening and do, and do reference checks, we're asking the same questions of all the candidates, not different questions. We're also talking to all the cand, you know, about all the candidates, not just some of them. And then, so I think there, there are real concerns about are we treating people equit, equitably? And then all we, also will we be violating the Fair Credit Reporting Act, right, which regulates how you do references. In other words, like you said, you have written permission to do this, then you need to have written permission to reach out farther than just the names that they might, that might be listed. If not, then we're actually violating the law. So I think all those things have to be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Fair, it's your fair credit reporting.
Thank you, Dr. McKinley. And I'm not a lawyer, so I'm now having to just sort of think this through. There are things that sometimes are HR practices that are not necessarily well-designed to understand the candidate, but they're really well-designed to avoid litigation. So asking every candidate the exact same question. Yeah, I suppose we're going to avoid some litigation, but we often don't understand who that person is. Ditto with reference checks. And so before getting ourselves boxed in to a set of HR practices that are principally designed to avoid litigation and make sure that we are engaging in equitable practices. Those equitable practices, in fact, sometimes aren't equitable. They're just the common wisdom, which isn't necessarily that wise. So look, I don't have answers here. I'm just 18 years, five hires. It's been a mess. And especially like our board right now is pretty unified, I hope. I, I think, I, I don't think there's any enemies here. But I've sat on this board when it wasn't so nice. And these policies got weaponized to advance candidates or sink candidates. And I want every board member to be empowered and feel like they're not being boxed out or being led down the primrose path leading to disaster because we need to do a really good job of hiring here. And so I'm just thinking through, you know, if, if we take the may out, all right, well, I guess that's going to lead to a particular result right now, maybe, maybe not. If I, Helen, I hear what you're saying, that, but we don't want just everybody calling everybody. But we, there are informal networks that everybody's going to use anyway. You know it. That's just the way it's going to happen. People are going to get calls, as you said. And so are you, we're supposed to hang up on that call? Or have you violated a policy? And I don't want to set us up to have a policy that we're all going to then violate because it's too constrictive. So again, I don't have the answers here. I'm just trying to raise the questions as we redo this.
What, one of the things we've done to try to balance the equity question is, it just, this is practice, it's not policy, is to, when we're working with the board, ask them if, if, what, if you're receiving information about a candidate, if you bring it to us, and then we need to share it with everyone. You know, everyone needs to see the same thing. All of you needs to see the same bit of information, but it certainly has to be more, you know, you, the due diligence, it's hard to put that in writing. You know, I think that's why you need significant trust in your process and in who you're working with. That's, you know, it just, it comes down to that. So I want to get you through your policy though. So I want to make sure, but let, and I think we need to go back a page and just make sure. I'm sorry, but we got to go backwards because I don't think we resolved the shall may on the site visits. So perhaps we can see thumbs if we want to keep it as it is with the may, is what I'm trying to say. If we're going to make the recommended change to the board may authorize, so you have the authority to do site visits if you choose. And let's, let's just see where we're standing right now. May? Trustee Whit, Whitrow? Are you? It will, it, it's a poll. It's not a vote. It's kind of a poll, listen. Are you? Okay. Thank you. And we'll move to the next then and say, should you decide to do so, here's, and for the most part, this is, was the existing language. We just changed, it's all the same. We just changed the nomenclature from managers to administrators so that it's more reflective of, of your employee groups. So it calls for, we may want to go back to that and make sure, everybody, please let's go back one. Let's make sure this is perhaps this says, if you're going to do it, this is who you have to take according to your policy. Administrators, it, the board members are going to conduct it. Doesn't say how many, it doesn't say who. The site visit will include trustees as well as administrators, faculty, classified staff. It doesn't say how many, so you have that flexibility. President of the academic senate or designee, president of your federation of teachers or designee shall be invited. That's what the language currently says, should you decide to do site visit. You okay with, you good with that? Yes, sir. Ah. So yeah, I, it shows you the age of this policy. So recommendation to add a student to the group should site visits be done? I'm seeing head nods, yes, on adding students. All thumbs, yes. Okay, I see that. Any other changes that you would want? I see a question on your face, trustee Quinlan? Or a comment? Okay, sorry. Just attention, you have questions, you're, you're rumbling it around. All right. So the rest of this stands. Okay? Now, the last drum roll. We can move forward, Sasha. This is stating the obvious, but it wasn't written in your policy before. Oh, let's go to H, next page. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Was there something on the previous one? Forgive me.
I was just going to mention, we changed the shall to may in the preceding slide, but then on this one, in I, it says, board members shall conduct site visits. The site visits.
But that's because it's following, because the, look at the preface, should board members decide to conduct the site visit, if, if you decide to do it, you're going to do it this way.
Okay. Okay.
Is that maybe, is there better language that we don't want to add confusion with this though? We want to make. I think the strikeouts are messing it up. Once it's all clear, look at it again for us and then let's make sure it's not confusing anybody.
I, I think he.
Maybe we just say, board members will, why don't we just say will there? And it doesn't have that shall may kind of language.
I think it's more along the lines of the word conduct. So the first portion says, should the board members decide to conduct? And I think the second meaning of conduct in that letter.
It's see, ah. I see board members will manage the site visit. Maybe it should say manage. Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you. So that seems to solve some of that concern. Good?
Thank you.
Got that? All right. And then your final addition, as I was saying, it's just, are putting in, on the paper what is clear, but it wasn't there before. It was kind of buried at the beginning. You do the final, you conduct the final interviews and make the final selection. Okay. Great job. You did it. Now, take a breath. And do we need to, do you need to take formal action? I don't know.
I don't think you can.
I think you can't because you need to see the cleaned, I mean, but, but to instruct us to go and make, to instruct your chancellor to make these changes.
Has to be agendized, yeah.
Okay. So what, I think that's the segue to the process for changing it. So let's go to the next slide.
Okay.
Sasha?
Oh.
You are the host of this meeting. You've been made the host. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So anticipating the need for change, we went and looked at your policy on policies. You have a policy and a procedure on policies, on how you write them and how you conduct them. And you're the board, they're your policies. You can't, you know, you could just say boom, boom, done. But you would, you would be in violation of your policy if you did. Because your board policy commits the board to consulting with the, you see the language on here, the appropriate constituents group or groups. Except for unforeseen emergencies and to follow the, the consultative process that's outlined in your administrative procedure 2410. So here, what you see in the italicized text and then in red, the, the pieces that are pertinent are, you're the ultimate decision maker. But you're committed to ensure that appropriate members of the district participate. So there is a value-based and a policy-based commitment to the participatory conference on your policymaking is what I, the way I would say it. And so you see in the second paragraph, except for unforeseeable emergency situations, the board shall not take action on matters subject to this policy until the appropriate constituent group or groups have been provided the opportunity to participate in consultation. So your policy you know, demands that you do so. And then it goes on that the process needs to follow your administrative procedure. So let's go to the administrative procedure to talk about, because where the pathway, and this is where your, your chancellor and your your executive leaders who are guiding your policy review and development processes can talk about your current practices, because your administrative procedure is a little bit vague in terms of specificity as it pertains to policies that are being derived from the board. There's a lot in your administrative procedure about policies and procedures that bubble up from various constituent groups and have the pathways that they follow. But it's less specific. So we'll, I'll tell you what the procedure says, and then we want to hear from the, the colleagues who do this work, what has been your past practice. So it doesn't specify the appropriate constituent group or groups when the board is making the policy. But it does imply that all policies ultimately run through the district participatory governance council. And here's the language that's where I'm, where we're reading that implication. Where it says to just, that you, the drafts are distributed to the appropriate consultative group or groups and the district participatory governance council. So I think we'll pause right there. And, and the question then for Chancellor Jackson and your your good folks doing this work, is it the case, I, we've looked at a couple of the agendas for your PGC and it appears that all of your policies and procedures are being reviewed by PGC. Right?
Yes, that's true.
So the yes, is there a way to expedite? So is, we need to think about what is the process by which this policy could be revised, brought back to the board for them to approve the recommended changes, then it goes back through PGC. policy could be revised, brought back to the board for them to approve the recommended changes, then it goes back through PGC. And the questions, what's not clear are things like one read, two reads, how long is this, is there an expedited process, how might this work?
In the past, what has happened is we still go through the participatory governance process. It does go through the PGC for review, it goes through the executive cabinet for review. Uh, and so the process has been, it can come from a lot of different ways. But it, we can expedite it if we can call a special meeting of the PGC, one agenda item to discuss this. It's a tri-chair, so the, the three chairs are made up of the chancellor, the district academic senate president, and we have a classified senate appointee. And so they would meet, they could meet to expedite this. We've done that in the past when we were getting board policies approved for ACCJC. And then the board can waive its policy and have a single read, they do not have to have two readings, they can have a single read.
And that's the language, yeah, we can go to that in a moment, it's the next language, was trying to just clarify the internal participatory governance process.
Yeah.
So the board could then, we can make the changes that are recommended. It would come back to the board at your next regular board meeting. For you to review and then go to the PGC. And they have standing monthly meetings, correct? And that could be agendized, reviews sent to them in advance, so it can go through their constituencies, they have the time for that. They could then look at it, give any input in a single meeting and then it comes back to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
We have done that in the past.
Okay. It could be done, well, when is the next board meeting and when is the next PGC meeting is what I would be curious about. It could, it's gonna be a plus or minus, could be six weeks, depending on how the meetings are scheduled and it's start of the term and that kind of thing going on. I saw a hand, but I lost it, oh, thank you, trustee.
So, I think most of us understand the urgency of the timeline, we're really late for districts, there are four or five other districts in the Bay Area right now, way ahead of us.
In the, yeah, in the nation, but that's a different conversation, yeah, we'll get to the timeline thing.
So. I, and so, what I'm hoping is that we can expedite this and what I would propose for an expedited process would be we have the authority to call a special meeting, which we could do via Zoom, where this is the only item. Where we could look at this, approve it, and then kick it on to the PGC. In a week, we could do that next week. If this is the only item for approval, that meeting could be done in 15 minutes to move it along and then we would.
Then it's ready for them.
Two more weeks out of that process, that's what I would like to see.
Well.
And then get feedback from the constituent groups, maybe they'll have something that we agree with.
The, the next meeting um, for the PGC is scheduled for the 24th of February. So they're.
Well, it's the start of the term, I'm not surprised.
Yeah, and the, and we have flex day on the 17th and the 18th, classes start the following Monday.
Right.
We have had a policy that we don't have meetings the first week of classes, simply because it's the first week of classes. Um, and so the first meeting would be February the 24th. I could confer with um, Donald Dr. Moore and with Teshada because she's the classified professional who's on the committee to see if we could convene a special meeting because of the urgency of this with one agenda item. But it would have to be after the term starts because of the faculty contract.
I would also say that you want to make sure that certainly you want to expedite, we're on the side of, of expediting and helping you. But you want to make sure that you're not looking like you're jamming things either. That you want to, this is a way of conveying trust in the process and that you're genuine about providing the consultation that your policy calls for. So you want that to be real, you want it to be advertised, you know, posted publicly, opportunity for discussion. People, the, the search for the chancellor is a very big deal to lots of people in this district. So you don't want to, to um, negate their interest is, is what I would say.
Just a point of clarification, Sasha great eyes and ears corrected me and said that, and it is on my calendar. Our next meeting of the PGC is January the 27th.
Oh, there is one in January, oh, well, the, the clouds have parted. And as long as I, I would just say, let's get this. Yeah, we can get this to you, we can turn this around the next, very quickly. But let's make sure we get it out there, so there's time and it has some, some airtime. You want, and you want to, you, you know, at the point, what you're doing, if you're holding a special meeting, people aren't around. So you're not going to get input on the front end, you're going to get input on the back end, and that's a hard place to get input if you're doing a board policy, because it will have already gone through PGC. And then it's back to you and you could have 200 people lined up in your next board meeting when you're approving this policy, giving you an earful about what's wrong with it. You would, I would rather have that information in the building process, because you want trust in your process. And I, I know there's concern because it feels like all these other places have, can, you know, have their searches out already. Every search triggers another search. Because behind them is a vacancy, you know, I, I understand the concern.
The other item is that on that flex day, um, we are still flushing out the agenda for that flex day, so if the board did make the changes in a special meeting, it could be vetted because that is our first flex day and I have the first 25 minutes. And I could say that the board has met and we could post it, it is going to be televised, it's also going to be recorded. And the documents could also be present there, so that would be kind of a first vetting.
Early input, okay.
Early input, and then we would have the PGC followed up on the 27th. Um, it, it could be done and I believe that there is um, a sense of, let's get on with the process.
Okay.
So I, I don't think that we're going to get a lot of negative feedback, the, the changes that we have made have been minimal. Changes is really clarifying language versus changing our procedures or policies, except in maybe one slide where there might be some feedback, but we welcome feedback, that's why we're, it's called participatory governance.
Great. I'll call your attention to the, the last bit on the, at the bottom on the slide, which is, especially for new trustees. Your, your practice, your policy, your standing policy is to have two reads of policies over two separate meetings. When the board is approving policies and your administrative procedures are a different issue. But you do this, you generally have a first read and that's what your policy calls for. So if you're doing this, and it does say, in unusual compelling or legal circumstances. You can elect to do this and read and act on the policy material in one session. And then it's recorded in the minutes as such, but I just wanted you to understand that you'll, you'll have a special meeting where you're approving it, it's going out, then it would come back for a final review from the board after the PGC, correct? Okay. Yes.
About how many districts include trustees on the search committee, is that, that's the norm?
It's becoming more so, it, we're seeing this more commonly.
I think communicating that as this goes out, because I think that's actually probably the most substantive change that we're making. And so.
That's a good point.
Putting that out, that information, I think will help people understand and contextualize what we're doing.
Just, that could be a cover letter, because I don't know how you send the policies out, but a rationale.
Yeah.
That is the reality as well for the district, but also the trends in the state.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good point. Excellent, okay, I think that ends this section. I'm going to look at the next slide, remind me where we are, ah, I think this is Dr. Benjamin on timeline.
So we're gonna, this shouldn't take very long, but it could. But it doesn't matter to me because this is important, this is really important. So we need some information from you, what we want to do in your next meeting, we will show up again. And as a result of what we decide here, I'm thinking, we'll have a timeline for you to review. But we need this information decided by you tonight so that we can build a timeline that reflects what you want. And then you get to respond to it and you can make other changes if you like, okay? So we may be able to do this quickly. So think about your new chancellor, you have a chancellor in place with the contract that ends whenever it ends. When do you want the contract of your new chancellor? What do you want the first day of work to be for your incoming chancellor? The one, we've just gone through this whole selection, but this is a really special person, tell you in advance here. I'm sure they do. So what date do you want that person to start, Dr. Jackson, your contract goes to?
Um, December 31st, 2023.
End of this year. Okay, so that's what we need to know first and we can kind of back up from there.
One December.
One December, you say? Okay, we got one December.
I would argue for July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st.
I think it's closer to July 1st, but the search process is going to be super tight.
It'll be too tight, I can tell you that.
Maybe July 15 or August 1, something before the beginning of the fall term with enough overlap.
Okay, I think July 1st is, well, let's just see, but I think July 1st is going to be really, really, really tight. I know that, I've already worked out, we've already worked out three different schedules for you. Just playing around with it, so.
Yeah, I would agree with trustee, sorry, um, at least three months, just based on our timeline, but I would prefer the beginning of the fall term. Just so they can have the full picture.
Beginning of, give, give me a date, we're getting all the dates down, and you get to argue for your date. So is yours, you said August 1? Is this September 1?
Yes.
July 1, December 1? Any other ones?
I'd say mid, mid-August when the term starts.
Mid-August?
Around mid-August, whenever that day is.
August 15, something like that?
That's what I would think.
Who, I'm, I'm assuming, because we talked, we've talked about this, I think, as a group, a kind of transition period. And I'm thinking you don't probably want the chancellor to start right when school starts, when the semester starts, so before. So I guess August 1st? That's tight, yeah, it's not as tight as July 1st, but it's still tight, but this is all with transition. So having the current and incoming chancellor is, I think, the thought process in my mind.
Bill?
How many chancellors are going to want to sit around for um, three months, six months? Before they can take over?
They're usually working.
Speak into the mic, please.
That's the reason I said one month, but two months maybe. I can't picture a very strong individual in terms of being a chancellor that's going to want to sit. Sorry. I, I can't envision a strong individual wanting to sit for six months, even three months, while they're learning the process. They're going to want to, they're going to want to move and take over. That's the reason I said one December, which would be 30 days. Which is, quite frankly, that even that's a long time for a strong executive.
Well, the date that you choose as a, a start date, we'll back up our calendar so that the, it'll end close to that date, or it could end, you're thinking it would end, the process would end in maybe early fall and the person would start December 1, is that what you're thinking?
And that, that is a 30-day ta, transition period.
Okay, with, with November being the month for transition. And.
No, December.
Oh, December transition, both would be.
Transition, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Jackson leaves on the 31st, so.
Which is really like mid-December.
Say, your start date is on the 1st of December, you have 30 days. Uh, recognizing you have holidays and all that kind of stuff, neither here nor there. I, I, I just can't envision a strong executive personality that's going to want to sit for a whole long time. Before they start getting into making decisions and making movements and doing what they feel is a way to operate.
Okay. Trustee Quinlan, Quinlan.
So the one question I have, and, and Dr. Jackson and other members of the board will know this, what deadlines do we have in a period that are going to create problems, I don't know what accreditation reports to do or other big items we have, where are we going to be with our strategic master plan? Because those are things that we wouldn't want to drop a new chancellor into right at the last minute, I would think.
And the other thing you have to take into consideration, bullet three. The beginning and ending of the term, when your spring break is, and summer. If you hire for an August 1 start date. We're going to be in, the people who volunteer or whatever way they're selected to be on the committee are going to have to be committed to do interviews and stuff in the summer. It's going to be June, July, we'll go for sure, all of June for either an August 1 or August 15, so you just have to keep that in mind. That those people will have to commit, because as Dr. Miles explained earlier. You're in, you're in, you miss a meeting, you're out, we can't start you all over, yes?
Well, so. I'm envisioning a process that takes place this academic year and concludes before everybody's gone.
So then let's get to the next one, how long do you want it posted? How long do you want it out there, how long do you want the application period to be?
Well, so I was just working back, if, if the term here is done the beginning of June, right?
Uh, May 27th, I think, we looked it up, I think it's May 27th.
And so the, that process is going to take the interview process is going to take the entire month of May. If we could get out in February and do a six-week post. Then we'd have six weeks to, to, to get people in the process, interview and hire by June 1 for an August 1 start.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, go ahead Cindy.
Does that work?
You need to build some time in for engagement with your community. That's.
Because we do the public forums, people have to be.
Or even if it's a survey, there's, you've got to have time for that input and then the, then the um, analysis of those data, bring it to you and then the building of the profile, all that has to happen before the posting. And that's.
But can't that process begin now, the, 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 getting feedback right now about what are we looking for in a candidate, and so we're, we're doing one track where we're revising policy and putting together a committee, we're getting feedback from the general community about desirable can't, you know, characteristics. Then the committee gets together and looks at that data, asks for any additional data and puts together a job description.
Well, you have a job description already.
Well, revise as a job description.
Yeah, and you need to look at that, there are some things you have to do as a board, you've got to get your timeline established and from these dates you're giving us, we can give you a schedule within August 1st, that was a do you want a July 1 schedule?
Well, I was suggesting August 1, just myself.
No, I'm asking the whole board, not just you, we can give you one that shows a July 1 if you want that, and August 1, and August, well, we don't want to do four, for goodness sake.
I mean, the preferable would be July 1, give the new chancellor this summer to begin to do that transition and get started in the fall.
You just, I'm just worried about the participation of your faculty members in the process and if we have anything in the summer, but we'll try to bring something. And if we have anything in the summer, but we'll try to bring something and vacations.
And so I'm not suggesting that, I'm suggesting that the search be concluded by June one, that, that we make an offer by June one. With an August one start or a July one start, something like that, I, but. Because I, I think we want the transition not to be in the fall, not to be in December. But to be like, people are out looking right now for new jobs.
Yeah, you've missed this train. You, I'm sorry, you've just missed it. There's a job closing on the thirteenth. This Southern California one closing on thirteenth, one closing on the twentieth, the, those are already set, people are, have worked over Christmas. For those, if you wanted to do that, you needed to have started in October or November, that's when they started. And these jobs are for a July one start. And they're closing right now and you're just starting, you're in a conversation, okay? So, and they give themselves a minimum of four weeks to recruit. Although you start talking to people, uh, people know we're doing this one, so people talk to us, but it's not.
Why don't you present us with the most optimistic scenario you think?
Well, we wanted to hear your dates, you know, what you were thinking.
I see.
And so we could try to figure out what to give you next month to look at. We can give you. Yeah, and we'll talk about all that in, when we present, yes.
So, given what you've said, to me, the only thing that really makes sense would be like a January first start date. To have people here so that they can do, participate fully in all the processes. And, um, I mean, that's the most critic, that, that has to be, we can't move that around because we can't have people. Not be available for, uh. You know, presentations or, uh, committee of the whole, whatever you want to call it.
Public forums and all that stuff.
Right, yeah, they have to be here on campus to do that, students, faculty. Um, and so we're, we're pretty much limited by that timeline. I don't think that we're going to get that in the spring.
It's gonna, and then you've got a week of spring break in there too, in March.
Well, I, based on what you said, that, uh, others are, they started in October, November for June one, that's about seven, eight months. So it sounds like we could possibly do August one, September one, but we're worried about the summer, which may push it further.
That's the, that's the challenge, that's those summer months, to have the participation.
So, and, and this is just brainstorming, po- possibly within that contract that we have, the committee, the screening committee. You say, are you, you're willing to work during this time, something of the sort.
That would have to be, they would have to understand that, as we used to say from Jump Street.
Yeah.
That if they get on this committee, they will be working in the summer. Yeah, but the public forums are still a problem because so many people are off. Uh, yes, trustee, uh, Cindy.
So, we are, I, I just forgot my question, um. We're, you're going to be doing Zoom meetings or are these in-person? Because that's going to make, that may make a difference for y'all.
Person.
Okay, I think that given, I think given, there might need to be flexibility if we're talking about. People who are going to be on vacation, if it ends up, we're going to have to do a lot of meeting during those months. Yeah, yeah, just because, that, you know, just keep yourself open for that, because people may be able to meet. Um, just not in person, right?
Yeah, that's another option. We've been hiring over the, the, by Zoom for two years now, so, yeah, yes, Nikki.
Okay, I don't quite. I don't know what you know. So, but let me put out a, a proposed. Schedule.
Okay.
What if we took the first half of May and the latter half of April? To conduct all of our interviews and those take place in person. That's the only part that needs to be in person, community forums and interviews. And then we could conclude the actual hire in that May period when people are still here. So if we started, let's say, that process on April fifteenth, I'm just ballparking it, right? And then we backed up and we said, well, okay, we're going to need three weeks for screening, one, two, three. So now we're into the end of March, that gives us. Oh, I don't know, seven weeks if we started May, February first with an announcement. That would give us six or seven weeks to announce, post, recruit. And that would give us between now and February first to approve a policy change and get a committee together. And get a job description together. And what that would mean is that in January now, as soon as people come back. We need to begin to get feedback from people about what are the characteristics that we want in a chancellor, blah, blah, blah. Put together the job description by early February and then let it percolate out there, but really then. Screen and hire in March, April, May. Why can't that be done?
We'll, we'll bring it back to you so you can see what it looks like.
And the reason I like that process, that timeline, is one. I think people are eager to, to do this and I, you know, I, I think our chancellor is amazing. And I love our chancellor, but I think that this job is really stressful on somebody. Trying to do what she's doing from where she's doing it. And, and, thank you.
Trustee, oh, I'm sorry.
In any case, I, you know, I think. But I, I, I think if we put it off until the fall. Then we're like really stretching this out.
I just want you to think about the quality of it too, just all the, just. And you still didn't say how many weeks you want to post it. We need to know that to build a, a timeline, want it out there, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks. A minimum of four.
And I think we could do four to six weeks of posting and, and there are a lot, the people who are out looking are out looking. They're, they're ready to apply, they're applying right now. And we'll be able to do some recruiting for people who aren't looking, but we could, I don't know, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, each, each job is different. There are some jobs that, there's one job out there right now in California that everybody wants. It will get the most, it's the, the most appealing job right now, that's where people are flocking. And so when that one gets filled, we'll have more people, we'll know more of what we got. Um, yes, trustee Quinlan, no, go ahead.
I, I'm just reminded of something just in production work that. Was always true, why is there never enough time to do a job right the first time? But always enough time to do it right the second or third time. And that's my concern is that by rushing.
Right.
Um, it puts, I mean, everything has to fall exactly in place and I'm not sure we can control that. I mean, I, I, as much as anybody, I would like to get this as quickly done as possible, but it, I'm just scared of. If one date falls apart, then basically we have to start everything over again.
In, in some of the scenarios you present to us, can we have one that has? No less than eight weeks posting time? I know that four is minimum, I just feel like. It should be there for longer, like that's something, it just should be there for longer.
It gives us more time.
Yeah.
Five is my personal minimum.
Is it, yeah, and then, and that's still a minimum, right? So.
Six is ideal.
Okay, okay, six to eight, okay.
So I think what we heard is you want a couple of scenario-type timelines, which we'll bring to you in your next meeting for review. The next meeting is two weeks from today, is that right? On the twenty-fourth. That's chancellor. Do you need to have it or can you do it on the twenty-fourth since PGC meets on the twenty-seventh?
There's no reason to rush before the PGC has its meeting. There's no reason to have a special meeting. If the board can take a look at it, I can, and we get the red line changes.
We'll get them to you this week.
We can put that out, I can put that out in my letter and in the announcement on flex day.
Okay.
I did want to just answer, um, a question that, um, trustee Quinlan asked about. What are some of the critical timelines that I, I'd like for you to consider as you go through and deliberate over? The options that, um, both Cindy and Helen are going to present to you. Um, finals week is May twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, so that is a, um. Kind of a sacred time that we don't have any meetings. Um, the twenty-seventh of May is the end of the semester. Um, the board is dark during the month of August and is on recess. Um, and we do not have any meetings during that time and that is also the time. That faculty are still out of contract, so there's no meetings until the fall semester, which is late August. Um, I didn't go through and, and put it up on a calendar to see how all of that falls, but I did want to have that. So that you would know that during the month of August, that is the time that the board usually is dark. You can change that, of course, but I just wanted to put that forward. Because people make reservations and holidays and family reunions, so. Um, just to consider that, and that also holds true for our faculty and our staff. Because they know that the board is not present, um, during that period of time, so that tends to be the time that the administrators take their time off. Um, at the same time, so just. As you go through and, and build whatever schedule you come up with, just put those out there and be aware of it. Um, we've tried to do hires during the summer. Um, and because it is out of compliance with faculty, uh, contracts, that usually does not work out. Uh, even when we've offered, um, you know, compensation, that, that usually doesn't work. So you need to look either before the end of the semester or you need to look after August. Because that period during that summer, um, tends not to be where faculty are available. And people tend to take their vacation during the month of August.
And the other thing is, it's a kind of, we can make this work, but when you hire, uh, C, when a CEO is hired. It has to be, and you know this already, in a regular meeting. Cannot, that approval cannot occur in a special meeting, has to be in a regularly scheduled meeting. I think that might be ed code, yeah. Okay, so you've given us a lot to think about, yes, trustee Gonzalez-John.
I'm looking at my calendar and let's say you started in September.
You, you can't start in September, it's not enough time, it's like starting now.
Um, that's what I'm saying, and so if the summer is off limits. Then the earliest you can start is the very end of August, which means you're really starting in September. What's the difference between starting in September for a fall hire? And starting in January for a summer, for a spring hire, you've got a four-month block and the only difference. It strikes me is that we're making a change to board policy, which is taking an extra two weeks.
Yeah, so that's right, you don't even have the four, you won't have five, four, you won't have four months. Barely, you got spring break, you got a whole week you're losing in there. And those Monday holidays too.
So you've got.
But just let us bring something, let us, let us work on it.
All right.
Yeah.
You, you'll do as well as you can do.
And then you can play around with it, you'll be looking at something on paper. So we'll have that for you two weeks from today and try to get it on the agenda so you can look at it before the meeting. It has been a pleasure, we are done, thank you so much.
Thank you, Helen. All right. We had another. Um, let's go ahead and move on to three point one-two, Royal, did you want to speak on that? That's the appointment of trustee for area two.
Yes, thank you, um. This should go a little bit faster, uh, it was, um, a lot of the same, a lot of similar points that were mentioned in the previous. Uh, presentation, uh, apply to this, there's an executive summary in your, um, packet and I have additional information if anyone. Um, needs it, but basically this is to, um. A, a point, um, a trustee for the, the position vacated by, uh, Kevin Jenkins when he was elected to the, uh, Oakland City Council. Or, um, when he resigned to this board to serve on that board. Um, per ed code, section five zero nine one A, um, the position, um, states that within sixty days, the vacancy. Um, or filling of a deferred regu- resignation, um, by the board, so either, it's either by election or provisional appointment. Um, it is our recommendation that it not be by election, but be by provisional appointment. By the board, just due to, um, financial considerations and also the fact that we just finished an election. Um, to cut to the chase, um, this, the sixty-day time period, um, it to- started to toll on. Uh, January ninth, which was the effective date of trustee Jenkins', um, resignation. Um, the end dead, the deadline date is March tenth. Um, that the, um, the new, um, trustee, um, would need to be voted on by the board, that's the absolute latest. Um, I've, um, we have, um, created a draft timeline of the date. Um, and again, the, the, I'm going through this, um, fairly quickly, the board has, uh, a much discretion over how the process. Uh, is completed, um, the requirements are primarily the timeframe. Um, that needs to be, um, adhered to and also that the, um, final candidate selection. Must be done, um, by majority public vote at an agendized meeting. The first step that we recommend is that the board, um, decide on a review committee. Uh, made up of not a majority of the board. Um, the, the, we ask that either tonight or shortly thereafter. Um, there'll be some indication of, of who that, um, committee will be, uh, decided upon by the board. Um, and then, you know, any direction to the chancellor on, um, who else, uh, should be a part of that committee. Um, applications to be open, um, our recommendation is that the, uh, applications. Um, then the notice be posted, uh, in the vacancy in, uh, major, uh, public places, you know, on the website. Uh, major newspapers in general circulation, uh, from, as soon as the, um, application material is ready. Through January thirty-first, um, again, these are recommendations, um, and then the application deadline, uh, be February tenth. Um, and then the application review, uh, review of applicants be from February tenth through February thirteenth. And the board interviews take place February fourteenth, um, either before the board meeting or, or sometime. So that the, the board will already be together for the, for the board meeting. Um, then, um, we recommend, um, some type of forum, um, you know. Whether it be a public forum or, um, some type of forum with the candidates, um, the week of February twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Um, with the final, um, candidate selection at the board meeting on February twenty-eighth. Um, and with, and, and with that, the, the new trustee's first meeting being March fourteenth. Now, um, there are options if the board would like to do a special board meeting, um, that could be. That could happen, um, the week of Mar- um, March sixth, um, as another option. Um, but again, this is a draft recommendation of, of, um, timeline, of a timeline. Um, the most important part of it would be, um, the board, um, deciding who would, would serve on that committee. Um, so that we could get that application process opened as soon as possible. And I'll turn it over to the chancellor, and I do have any, if, if, if anyone has any specific questions or, or. Uh, would like any more information regarding the, the timeline, uh, but it's pretty straightforward dealing with, you know, ed code. Um, it sets out the information pretty clearly as to what, what needs to be done. Um, trustee Delphine Pope, President Delphine Pope.
Yeah, thank you, Royal, that's, this is really helpful, um, can you let us know, February ten through thirteenth, that's not a very long application. Period, is that typical or is that just, I know that this is something we haven't really done much of before.
Yep, I mean, it would really depend on the number of candidates that, that you receive, I mean, we could, we could extend that. Um, but it really goes from. that, um, but it really goes from the really wanting to have the board interviews happen at the next board date. That, that is not a requirement, that was just something more of a convenience standpoint, so that we wouldn't have to pull the board members together at this, at a separate date, but you could decide to do the board interviews after the public forums, you could do the board interviews the same day as you do the um final candidate selection. So it's really, you know, up to the board's discretion. So that's, n- nothing here is set in stone, other than that this has to be completed by that March date, which is March tenth.
Colleagues, do you have any other questions? Go ahead, Nikki.
So the process you've laid out is a proposal, it's not written in law, it's like, here's our suggestion from the administration on how to do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Imagine you had a process where fifteen people applied. And eight of them are obviously not compatible. Would your process, the process you, you've laid out, require us to interview fifteen people? Or is there some screening process, or is there like a the board can vote to advance five people or something like that?
Thank you, that's, that's a great question, I would say it would mirror the, the selection process that we generally have, this review committee act as a screening committee, and then select the top however many candidates, depending on the number, and then those are the candidates that that are decided to move forward to the interview process or the forum process. But you have complete discretion over the process, the reason I recommend you know, following the structure similar to what we already have in the HR procedure with the screening and then moving forward with the uh advancing those candidates to the board, it, it cuts down on exactly what what you're saying, it, 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 there's, there's a criteria, you know, other than the fact that the person obviously has to live within the district and you know, um, but it, it, it creates some, some sort of rubric, if you will.
So the challenge I would see in that process is per Brown Act, you could only have three people on that committee. And so you would have a minority of the board making critical decisions about what the majority of the board could even consider. And I'm not quite comfortable with that, I think the board must act as a whole in that regard, this is not like a screening committee, this is an inherently political process that every board member needs to have an equal voice in. And so I would suggest some other process by which we winnow down.
What do you suggest, trustee?
I'm not sure, I'm thinking out loud, um, it might be that the board would independently review candidates on paper, and then we could have a uh nomination process where we said, we'll interview the five people, and if they, if, if five people get four votes or three votes, or something like that, you need three votes to get an interview, or something along those lines, I, I don't know. Maybe not four votes, maybe three votes. So, but I, so I think there needs to be a way so that we don't have to in, we don't have to interview everybody. But that each member of the board has a say in that process, and if you're in the minority, you're in the minority. But um, so I would suggest a, a threshold of three votes to get an interview. And then you need four votes to get elected, so, to get appointed. So you're gonna have to have a majority at some point, but I, I don't know, colleagues, what do you, what do you think?
So the question I have is what roles are the student trustees playing in this, if any? And putting them on that tight of a timeline is probably gonna be a little more prob- problematic than for us.
Well, the overall timeline is the one thing that we have no uh power over. But, but you can flip the um application review process to have that on the front end, if you will. And then the, the, the vote that um trust, trustee Gonzalez UN is, is speaking of to move forward with the interview, i- if that makes sense, that the screening not done by a committee of three board members, but all the, all the board members do the screen, the, the screening, they see all the applications. And then they, they decide, uh, you, you know, they, they, you know, vote to move, rank them, and then move forward.
And my understanding is that those applications are all public documents, that's, this isn't a private HR process, so anybody who's putting themselves forward to be the candidate for that, the trustee for that district is saying, here are my qualifications. Everybody sees them, and Louis, I, I would suggest that the role that student trustees make is that they may, in fact, nominate candidates and second, and then they have an advisory vote. In this district, they're, they're entitled to nominate and second. And they get an advisory vote, but we need three votes of sitting elected trustees to move the candidate forward. Yeah, I'm just, we're making it up right now.
So let me, I was just, I've gone through the process at Chiba Las Pecitas, we had a vacancy, so I can tell you what we did and we can pick and choose, or uh we can also ask Dr. Benjamin or Dr. Miles what they've experienced, so we have an idea. When we put in place a board review committee that review committee was not to go through and screen and whittle down who the board would be voting on. That committee was to set the standards. We will interview six people. We will have these questions that we will ask of all candidates. We will determine based upon that who will be, and we could go with three votes or whatever you want. But that's what the committee, this, the selection kind of committee, if you want to call it that, or pre-screening committee, but it was really establishing what the protocol was going to be before we got to actually doing the screening, and the board, that was really easy to do, it was three people. We got together, it was myself, it was HR individual, and we came up with those kind of criteria. That committee also established, we want you to provide a uh letter of introduction. The letter should include A, B, C, D. Why you want the position, what is your background, what are you bringing to the board, et cetera. The board did that, not staff. The board, that committee that we were talking about, did all of that. Because you have to have all of that done before you can advertise, you can't say there's an opening and then say, oh, by the way, you need to do this, this, and this, the advertisement should include all of that, so that's why the timeline's so short and critical. And that was why it was a, a smaller membership of the board versus having all at that time, seven members, but six members here. That can be done within two to three days. I've already started on some possible questions based upon what we've done previously, so that should expedite it. Once that's determined, we send that out to all the board members, they look at it and say, yeah, those questions look good. Yeah, we like the process, yeah, I think we will interview a minimum of, you know, three people, it may be more. We may want to go up three to five, just like we said here in terms of recommending candidates. Then you post it. Post it for however long you want, that's what the committee says, we want to post for five days, we want to post for a week. Seven days, ten days, whatever it is. And then based upon that, that's when this timeline becomes critical, because then we have to do the backward planning. If you want to post for ten days, say, and you get twenty-three applications. You have to build in some time for all of the board to screen those applications. So you've got to build that into the timeline, and then you have, you could have a special meeting if we're running really close. So that's why we tried to pick a date where it was a regular board meeting, and you have to do public interviews. And you have to take a public vote. And so the committee determines how they want to do that. If there is a tie, what do we want to do? If, how, do we want to do a straw poll where people vote and then roll it over to Sasha who tabulates and says that's top five candidates are blah, 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 blah. Um, so it, it's what that screening committee or pre-screening committee establishes all of those criteria. Then the full board looks at all of the applications, determines who they're gonna interview, and then we send out a notice to those individuals. But we have to state that we are looking at in the announcement, so people can put it on their calendar. We are looking at having a meeting on whatever date it is to interview those successful candidates that are being forwarded for consideration.
Yeah, and I, and I was just adding, it, it could also depend on the number of applicants you receive, you make that you, you make a caveat in, in your, you know, discretion, if we receive five or less candidates, we'll interview all candidates, if we rece- receive more than five applications, then you know, we, we look to the screening process, so I mean, that, that is another option as well.
So it's really like we said, it's up to the board in terms of its discretion, the only timeline is that we have to have it before that sixty days are up. Or we're in violation.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other thoughts? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nikki. What do you, yeah, what, I guess my question is, what do you need from us right now?
Who do you want to be on that pre-screening committee?
Yes, if you want to have a pre-screening committee, and if so, who do you want to be on that pre- uh pre-screening committee? But the most important thing would be um us um having some guidance so that we can move forward with however we want to get the information posted to the public as soon as possible, to at least res- start receiving the applications.
Nikki.
So I'm looking at the timeline. And it seems to me that at our next board meeting, the twenty-fourth, we could make a decision to approve what the committee's done, so the committee comes up with a process set of job description, et cetera, the board could consider this, make amendments, modify, et cetera, and then vote for the twenty-fourth. Then, after we post and the board members get applications, I think then the earliest we could vote to, in a regular meeting, to vote to advance candidates to an interview would be February fourteenth, which would be our next board meeting after that. So we would do an initial vote to winnow down that pool to interviews, and then we'd have to make a final vote on that no later than that first board meeting in March.
That would be too late.
That would be too late, so we would need either a special board meeting, or the meeting on the twenty-eighth is when we would have to make a final vote, right?
That's correct.
Well, or have the media, the, the timeframe between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, that's where the board interviews, does public forums, and then on the twenty-eighth makes final vote. So we would have from twenty, the twenty-fourth of January we could do two weeks of open, like announcement. And then we would have two weeks to screen and review, and then we would vote on the fourteenth to see who we wanted to interview. Between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, we would need to set up public forums and board interviews. And that would have to be done by special meeting. It looks like there's got to be a special meeting in here somewhere. And I'd rather give a little more lead time for possible candidates to kind of get, to, to really get the strongest candidates that we can, and to have them present themselves as strong as possible. And then we'd vote on the fourteenth to winnow that down of the fourteenth of February.
I'd be okay with that, yeah.
So just to be clear, um, what would happen between now and the board meeting on the twenty, on the, on January twenty-fourth?
We'd have a committee to set the rules.
Okay.
To work with the chancellor, to set the rules, set up interview kind of questions. Those would be brought to the board for the meeting, for consideration on the twenty-fourth, we'd agree modify and vote on the twenty-fourth, this is our announcement, and this is our process.
But, yeah. So you're saying that, or are we still saying simultaneously, January ten, the vacancy would be posted, because right now, according to the schedule, it's posted January ten, so.
I'm saying, post on the twenty-fourth.
Scratch.
When we've got a real job dis- done, the position description and the process. I don't think we're ready to post, we don't have anything.
Right, so that gives us enough time to actually have it out there, given all of the other sequential dates that you just articulated, right?
I think that gives us from the twenty-fourth
Until.
For about two weeks until January twenty-fourth to about the seventh. And then that gives the board one week to do paper screen and come and be ready to vote on the fourteenth to who we want to advance to an interview.
Two weeks.
It would give us a week between the seventh
No, no, I mean, the posting would be up for
Yeah, the posting would be up for two weeks, we'd have a week to do paper screen. And then we would have to figure out between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, how do we set up public forums and public interviews? But that wouldn't be such a big deal, because we'd have voted on the fourteenth how to, to narrow the pool. And so we're not having to interview twenty people, we're gonna interview however many we decide to interview.
And it, it would be, if if possible, the screening committee to determine the date, the dates, so that when we do the posting, we can say
Yeah.
You know, forums will be held on these days, and the final decision will be made, please put this on your calendar, this is a mandatory in appearance.
Yeah.
How do we want to do it?
And all of those votes, including any tallies, must be done in public, you can't put in and then have Sasha go away and then come back and announce the vote, all of those votes are public.
Yeah.
That is correct.
And the conversation.
Yeah, everything is public.
Yeah, and, and the way that we, we did it, so there was a bit of I'm not sure how to, how to state it. Decorum, thank you, uh decorum is that each board member had a ballot, so if someone said, well, how did so-and-so vote on this, we could and it was tallied by Sasha and said there was four votes for this. And if someone says, well, I'd like to call for the question and see who voted for what. But we didn't have any of that, it was, it was held, so that there was some yeah, some circumspect to the process. If an individual didn't get any votes, you don't want to say you got zero votes, you, you just said the top three candidates or whatever that are being advanced and is to do that.
But they would need to be a public record.
It is a public, yes.
So all the bout, the tallies would have to be a public record, we just didn't have to read them all out.
That's right.
If this is the schedule that we uh got here and we receive a phone call or dialogue from one of a potential applicant. Are there any legal constraints from us telling them what the schedule is?
Uh, this is just a recommendation, this, this document that you're looking at, it's only a recommendation.
Once, no, once
Oh, oh, once you do.
Officiated it, you know.
Yes, what
Is there a Brown Act kind of Does it have to come from the administration, or can it come from each of the trustees?
When we have the meeting on the fourteenth, it's a public meeting, so anyone listening in would know what the schedule is at that time, and it's
So at that point in time, we can tell people?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We still need three, you need
We still need committee members.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the, those interested in the committee can contact you, you tell us, you know, um they contact the board president.
It really is the board president making the appointment.
Do you want to set a deadline for when folks want to contact me if they want to be on the committee?
Midnight tonight.
Okay. Yeah, two hours. Gotta make a decision quick. Yeah, for sure. Okay, so tonight, if possible, feel free to just contact me. Trustee with row?
Can you ask me a question of who would like to be on the committee?
Yeah, you can contact me tonight. Just contact me by phone, and I'll give the names to the chancellor. Just contact me by phone and I'll give the names to the chancellor tomorrow. Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Johannes.
Just going back to what trustee UN said. He, you mentioned that you would prefer all trustee members in that screening process, correct? So wouldn't it just be all of us? Did we, like, did we agree with him or not, is what I'm would would it just be every member?
Go ahead, Nikki.
Okay, I think the process that we are now envisioning is is a committee that Deanna will appoint to put together a proposal for a process. That proposal will lay out timelines for interviews, for announcements, et cetera, and begin the drafting of a description of the position and set up some questions that we're going to be asking to bring to the board at our next board meeting. That will be agendized publicly. We'll discuss that. We'll modify and amend what the committee proposes and we'll vote on it. At that point on the twenty-fourth, the position announcement will go public. By February seventh, we're proposing roughly, all applications will be in. And then the board will get those applications. And then at the meeting on the fourteenth, we will publicly discuss and vote on those applications to see who we're going to advance for public forums and interviews. At the twenty-eighth, having conducted interviews and listened to results of forums, et cetera, the board will then vote on the final make the final selection to replace trustee Jenkins. And so every trustee will not only have a voice in the process at our next meeting, but then on the screening and then on the final selection. Are we good?
Yeah. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Great.
Thank you.
So we have our process now. Thank you, Royal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, three point one three, I just saw Andrea leave. Consider ratification of adoption of resolution number two, twenty-two slash twenty-three dash eighty-eight return to normal pre-COVID operations. So Andrea is not here. Royal Chancellor wanted to present on that.
Sure moved.
It 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 really isn't an action, just to to recapture what we said before in the December organizational meeting, and then we had our regular meeting. There were some questions over the format of the resolution. And then the board said that they would like for us to go back and change that, put that therefore be resolved. There was also some comment regarding some of the language that that wanted, some of the board members wanted to be included in that. I asked for guidance from the board members. There were three board members that volunteered, President Delphine Pope, trustee Ewing and trustee Johannes. We met with the presidents and with HR and with legal two days after that board meeting on that Thursday. After the board meeting, we reviewed it, got feedback, made some changes, included, changed the format. And then we were asked to make sure we run it by legal to make sure everything was okay and in compliance. They made a few changes on it, nothing substantive, just took out what they felt were some superfluous information that was already understood and was already in code. And that is what you're looking at today. So we wanted to bring it back to you to look at, to review so that it will go forward for ratification at the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. No, there's no action tonight. This will be back in front of us on the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Okay.
And with that, I think we can adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.